I'd like to call this to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, June 14th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Wilkins?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Present.
Next up is approval of minutes of the previous meeting from May 24th, 2021. I do want to note that we will correct the spelling of Grace Wilken's name. Her last name is W I L K E N, and that was spelled in the minutes, so that will be corrected. Is there a motion for approval?
I move to approve the minutes of previous meeting, May 24th, 2021.
A second. A second.
Go ahead, Jay.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is additions to the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, I do want to remove one item from the agenda, and that would be item further down. But I wanted to make a statement first with regard to that action. And this is in relation to staff appointments and in the interest of being transparent with the public. And as we move into new terms for everyone, I just wanted to provide some context and information related to staff appointments. So each year at this time, under our mayor aldermanic form of government, and some people have used the term "strong mayor" form of government, the accurate term for Urbana is the mayor aldermanic form of government, and there are some subtle differences. The Urbana City Council considers the annual mayoral staff appointments or reappointments. So included on tonight's agenda were reappointments for department heads. These are all reappointments, as well as the police and fire chiefs, along with some upper-level leadership positions. This was a total of 19 people in all. These individuals are responsible for policy formulation and departmental leadership, as well as daily operational functions in public works, public safety, human resources, finance, and the executive departments. Collectively, these individuals have provided the city with over 250 years of service, and this does not include the professional experience they brought to their employment when they started with the city. All of these individuals were initially appointed and approved by previous city councils, and some it was a number of city councils ago. All of them have been essential to the core functions of this government, have provided the critical stability and creativity that we've needed, especially during the last 15 minutes of COVID and in addressing our many serious community issues. And I can tell you, all of them have worked many, many extra hours to serve the people of Urbana, and they have served with excellence. So just so folks understand the way we do things in Urbana, these individuals all have terms of employment that end on June 30th of each year, and that coincides with the end of our fiscal year. So not only are we faced with, you know, developing, passing a budget by June 30th, but we also have the deadline of annual appointments. These employees, as appointees, lost most of the job protections that they possessed prior to applying for these positions and to accept their appointments. They no longer have civil service protections, they're not members of unions, and they do not have the right to return to their former positions in the unions if they had one. And this is true of individuals in public safety and the public works oversight positions. So our specific appointment practices here in the city of Urbana, and these practices long predate my role as mayor and even as city council before that. Our practices, it turns out, aren't all that common among cities of our size and with our form of government. And in fact, our very form of government isn't all that common either for cities of our size. Typically, you'll see a mayor aldermatic or strong mayor form of government in much larger cities, you know? So if you look at Chicago, New York, LA, it's a mayor council form or a strong mayor form of government. For cities our size, according to the National League of Cities, most of the cities our size, especially in Illinois, have a city manager form of government. So if you look at Champaign, Bloomington, Normal, Evanston, that sort of thing. Couple of comparable cities to us in terms of our form of government, Springfield, Illinois, and Danville, Illinois. So for comparison, I did call the mayor of Springfield today. That's a mayor aldermanic form of government. And in the city of Springfield, department heads, similar to ours, and the fire and police chiefs are appointed positions. Everybody from police lieutenants and fire division chiefs and below are not appointed. They are administrative decisions, not legislative decisions. They do not go to city council. We're working to identify some other mayor aldermanic communities to provide some comparable information. I have a call-in to the mayor of the city of Danville to see what their practices are. But again, the way we're set up, it's our form of government and the way we make these appointments, there aren't a whole lot of comps in the state of Illinois. So to prepare for tonight's appointments and also as part of the orientation and the training for the new council members and the continuing council members, and again, we have five new council members, which is unprecedented, I think, in recent history. City staff met in twos with council members to brief them on the appointment process, to address questions and concerns, and we appreciate all the questions that were raised and the opportunity to clarify for folks. Staff responded to most of the questions that were raised following these briefings and also to the many questions related to the budget. And as I said, all these things are coming at the same time, so this is an incredibly busy time of the year in the city. But what brings me to this point tonight is last evening, we received some more questions from a couple of council members regarding the appointment process and requesting information about the individuals who are up for reappointment. And I do understand where the questions are coming from. You haven't been, most of you haven't been through this process before. You're not familiar with the candidates and that sort of thing. And I do think it's necessary to provide city council with more context on the process itself, not only the city council, but the public, because, you know, we have a lot of new, we always have new people from the general public tuning in and watching. So we need to provide more context on the process, the positions, the tenures of the current employees up for reappointment, as well as some of the procedural and legal distinction between the initial appointments and follow-up reappointments. And again, what we have before us tonight and what you will have is our reappointments. And there are also operational implications of allowing these positions to become vacant on very short notice. But it's clear to me, after the questions that came in last night, that if a council member feels they don't have enough information to vote on these reappointments, they don't have enough information to vote either yes or no at this time tonight. So that being the case, I will not be bringing forward any candidates for reappointment until the council has an opportunity to receive the information that was requested. So I'm going to pull item J4 off the agenda for tonight and bring those back on June 28th. And in the meantime, I'm going to be inviting council members who want to to meet over the next week to further discuss the individual appointments, to discuss the implications of actions related to these appointments, and we can provide some basic information about the individual staff members up for reappointment. Our goal is to make sure folks are fully informed and that we respect the work and the service of the individuals that are being put forward. So we will be pulling item J4 from the agenda. Okay, we'll move on to presentations and public input, and we've got an overview of city workforce diversity report, and that's being given by our HR department.
Just give me a second to get this up on the screen for you. Okay, is that looking okay to everybody?
We can't see anything, Elizabeth.
Oh, okay, let's, thank you for that. This is always challenging, and I've got multiple screens going on here. All right, should be showing here in a second. Does that look better?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we have had requests, I think, originally at the time that we presented information about the HR and finance department to provide some information about our workforce diversity. And so first, I want to thank Liz Borman, who did a really great job of gathering all this data and giving us the comparables. We were all very invested in HR and fostering a workplace that represents the diversity in our community. So I'm going to run through a few notes, and then I'll show you some graphics that show where we're at. So, okay, first of all, on some of these... Okay, that's not keeping up. Okay. On some of the charts you're going to see, you'll see WF for workforce. So that's presented as a point of comparison, so you can see our workforce versus where we are currently at. The workforce statistics we're using come from the Illinois Department of Employment Security, IDES, the county-level workforce information, and specifically Table 3A of that publication. We will show you some specific information about FLSA exempt employees. Those are generally management or professional-level employees who are not eligible to receive overtime pay. This data is for what we call regular employees, so we're not including temporary and seasonal employees that are a normal part of our workforce. Also, I want to mention that the data is changing frequently. So the data that you're going to see is up to date as of mid-May. And finally, the terminology here is intended to be inclusive and current. As we know, the language around diversity is evolving all the time, so we've done our best here. So we're going to start off with a slide that shows all city employees. And again, these are regular employees. And the comparison here, and you're going to see this on several charts, is in green, we have where we were at in 2017. In blue, we have 2021, so that mid-May information. And then in gray, we have the county workforce, which is our point of comparison. So I do want to note that during this period, the number of employees decreased. So opportunities to bring diversity into the organization were more limited than if we had maintained a consistent level of staffing. However, the percentage of black employees in our workforce actually increased from 8.4% to 10.9%, which is almost at that 11% comparator that we have for the county workforce. At the same time, overall, the percentage of white employees decreased from 86.3% to 84.9%, still well above the comparator that we're using. We had a slight increase in the percentage of Latinx employees, and then we had a slight decrease in the number of Asian-American and Pacific Islander and other employees. So then I'm going to drill down on that to just our exempt employees. And for, so again, exempt employees are generally management employees or kind of high-level professional employees who are not eligible for overtime. And so on this chart, you will see that the percentage of white employees in that group has actually increased from 86.5% to 88.4%, again, well above that comparator that we're using. However, for black employees, that percentage has increased from 3.8% to 9.3%. So not at that 11% level, but getting close. And then for Latinx employees and for Asian-American and Pacific Islander and other employees, we've seen decreases in both of those categories over the last four years. So we're going to take a quick look at employees that were hired in the last four years, because this is one way to look at our progress. Our opportunity to increase our diversity comes when we're making new hires. So over the last four years, 81% of new hires were white, 13% were black, 3.3% were Latinx, and 2.2% were Asian-American and Pacific Islander. 91 employees were hired during that time period, and 17 of the 91 employees identified as minorities. So that's almost 1 in 5 altogether. So then we're going to take a look at gender. And I was actually a little surprised by this, I guess I shouldn't have been, but all employees across the organization, we are 28% female and 72% male. The workforce in the county is 52.2% male and 47.8% female, just for reference. And this is probably related to certain occupations that we have that are... where we have lower female representation, for example, in police, fire, and public works. So then when we look at that group of, sorry, FLSA exempt employees by gender, we're actually doing a little bit better in that group. 37% female and 63% male. So females are still underrepresented in that group, but better than in the overall city as a whole. And then looking at employees by department, and this chart's kind of busy, so I'm going to give you a little explanation. But so here we have workforce at the top, and the green portion of the bar represents the percentage of the workforce that is white. The orange portion of the bar represents the percentage of the workforce that is black. The blue portion represents Asian-American and Pacific Islander individuals. And then the purple portion of the bar represents the percentage of the workforce that is Latinx. So you can see, we've broken this out by department. We have HR and finance, executive, police, fire, public works, and community development. And you can see that, you know, all of those departments are different on the chart. They have different numbers of, different percentages of employees in various minority groups. Another request we had was for, to find out a little bit about where our employees live. And unfortunately, there's no indicator in our HR system for, to determine whether, for example, somebody's a resident of the city of Urbana. So this is mailing address. So, for example, we could have employees who have an Urbana mailing address that don't live within the city limits, but this is the best we could come up with. So you can see on this chart for mailing address, 23% of our employees have a Champaign mailing address, 18% have an Urbana mailing address, and then 13% Mohammed and some smaller communities, and other smaller communities in Champaign County is 18%. So outside of Champaign County, 13% from other counties in Illinois, and then actually just one employee, which rounds to 0%, lives across the state line in Indiana. So overall, that's 46% living in other locations in Champaign County outside of Champaign and Urbana. So we can also break down our workforce by age. More than 60% of our employees, as you can see on this chart, are between 30 and 49 years of age. So we have a relatively youthful workforce, and about 10% of our workforce is over 60. And then we can look at longevity in terms of years of service here at the city of Urbana. And you'll notice, we also have a large percentage of employees who have been here a relatively short time. So 45.2% of our workforce has been with the city for, by five years or fewer, which is also kind of interesting. Finally, I just want to summarize. We have made some progress in some areas over the past four years. We will continue to make progress as we have turnover. And now that we have our Human Rights and Equity Officer, Carla Boyd, on board, she and I have already had a conversation about meeting with the senior managers in each department to talk about what opportunities we might have to advance diversity within those departments. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Mary Alice?
Elizabeth, what falls into that other category?
Sorry, are you referring back to the early slides where we broke down?
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So actually, currently, we have no employee in that other category, but in 2017, we had an employee who self-reported as Native American or Alaska Native.
Okay. Grace?
Thank you, thanks for the information. I was wondering how the workforce data is collected? You said that's, is that county-specific?
Right, so the Illinois Department of Employment Security actually provides that information. They collect that, and it's available on their website, and they do that at the county level.
Because I think another good measure would be the actual population of Urbana, because those numbers are different than the workforce. So I think that's something to keep in mind, especially with inequitable unemployment rates. You know, I think we should be targeting more for the population than the workforce, and those numbers are pretty different.
Right, yes, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I would say, I believe that IDES, and I can confirm this, they don't measure workforce necessarily by people who are employed, but I believe they measure by people who want to be employed.
So I would add something to remember is that our labor shed is way bigger than the city of Urbana. And that was something that surprised me when I got onto the city council and then served on the Economic Development Corporation. Our employees and our applicants come from, as you saw, the entire county and actually the entire region, and that's true for all the cities around here. And we compete for employees with other cities as well. So when we are measuring or using a metric to measure ourselves by, we cannot accurately measure ourselves only against the city of Urbana, because our labor shed is way, way bigger than the city of Urbana. And if you go to the, you know, any of major employers around here, the city of Champaign, the University of Illinois, Carl Hospital, the school districts, you'll see the same thing. The labor shed is, people travel. People travel a long way for jobs, and it's particularly, I think it's going to be even more telling with the, you know, the experience with remote working these days. So we have to be very cautious about what we compare ourselves to, because our labor shed is not just the city of Urbana. And we also, we get employees, and then they get a lot of great experience in the city of Urbana, and then they move on to other places that actually can pay significantly more. So there's that trend as well. But we need to be very cognizant of what our labor shed is.
Yes, I was surprised that it was only 18% Urbana mailing addresses. And I was wondering, I thought earlier, Elizabeth, did you mention that you had some idea of that broken down by department?
I don't have that handy. We could get that, certainly. I mean, we have it in our HR database, but I don't have it at this moment.
That would be interesting, I think, especially with saying that, you know, certain departments like police and fire might be more male-dominated and might be more out-of-Champaign-Urbana mailing address-dominated.
Sure, we can get that.
I was also wondering how many people are in the community development department, or however that's classified?
Give me a second here, I've got to look at my workbook.
Lori might be able to answer that, too.
20 positions are currently filled, there's a couple of vacancies.
Thank you. Just wondering if that's why some of the numbers were a little different, as if it was only like, you know, five people or something? So, thank you.
James?
Yeah, maybe I missed this, but did you show us department broken down by gender?
No, we could not, but we could do that.
I would like to see that as well.
So department by gender and department by place of residence. Okay, any other questions? Mary Alice, and then Chris.
So Elizabeth, I'm hoping you're going to make these slides available once you've added some additional things, so that we can look at them and also the public can look at them. One suggestion I have is adding the ends into your percentages, so that we know how many people are in all those categories that are broken down. I think that would be helpful. Not necessarily to add into the presentation, but I think at some point, it would be good for us to understand turnover, right? On average, how many people do we have that turn over by these large groups? And it can be like a three-year average or something. It doesn't necessarily have to be in this, but it would be good to have... I know that, if I remember correctly, I think the chief of police said that we have roughly five turnovers every year, three to five police people that turn over every year, because there were some questions that I had a couple of years ago. So adding the ends, having some kind of idea of how quickly these positions turn over by department would be helpful. And then I guess, to Grace's point about using the population numbers, I actually caution against using that. And it's because we have a pretty unique, not unique, we have a community which is heavily dominated by students. So we're going to have, it's going to be skewed based on the demographics of the University of Illinois, in my opinion. Those are my three things.
And our approximate total employee count is...
Oh, it's, I'm going to say about 240.
240. Chris?
Yeah, to piggyback that, could we get the number of employees in each department?
Sure, yeah, I can probably add that on that slide by department.
Okay, thank you.
Shandra?
So you said this data was collected in a survey by staff?
No, this, so the current data for 2021 came from our HR system. Right, so we use Tyler Munis as what we use for finance and HR. The 2017 data was old data that came from the system that we used prior to this that we've, you know, taken offline and kept in a database.
So, okay, thank you. And so the three characteristics of workforce diversity you're looking at through your software is gender, race, and age, correct?
Um...
Or did I miss, I think that's what you presented?
Correct, I don't, so, I mean, diversity takes a lot of forms, but I don't think that we're tracking anything else that you would probably consider for that, yeah.
Grace?
Thank you. And so the plan moving forward from summary was to contact the department heads and to come up with a plan to address increasing diversity in the city workforce. and to come up with a plan to address increasing diversity in the city workforce. Is that correct?
Right, so, so as you, as you probably can imagine, having been through orientation, we have a lot of different kinds of jobs, right? And so Carla and I will meet with the senior level managers in each department and we'll talk about, you know, what, what are some strategies you suggest that we could use to increase diversity within jobs in your department? And then, you know, we'll work through that and probably put together a plan for some specific actions that we might want to take to change thing up, things up to, you know, improve our diversity recruitment.
Is there any consideration of a citywide system or policy for that?
So I guess, as I said, every position is kind of different. So when we get a request in HR to fill a position, that's a question that we're always asking, right? And so for some positions, it might involve using certain recruitment sources that are specifically targeted at minorities. For some kinds of positions, it might involve, you know, a number of personal contacts in order to encourage specific individuals to apply. But there's, there's a wide variety of strategies that that we might use and it really just depends on the specific position that we're trying to fill.
Shandra.
So Mary Alice mentioned turnover is, one, is the turnover rate higher than, I guess, what is normal? Would you say, just as a guess?
I, I hate to guess. I'd rather have the numbers, but but it does feel like, it feels like it was surprisingly high during the pandemic period.
Okay, and I'm sorry, what was that?
It was a little bit of a surprise. I would have thought people would prefer to stay put.
Okay, um, and also, my question is, of the people who have left, do you all conduct exit interviews? And is the diversity, sort of the diversity, equity, inclusion big brought up in exit interviews to see if that has a factor in them leaving?
Sure, we do conduct exit interviews. And I'm going to let Liz speak to that if she would, because I'm not actually one of the people that conducts exit interviews.
I'm working on my camera, there we go. So, yes, when we conduct exit interviews, we don't specifically ask that question. What we do is we ask a number of questions. And, you know, it may be, why did you decide to leave? And that, there may be something that goes to, if it does have something to do with diversity and equity and inclusion, the person may provide that information. But that is not a question that we specifically ask.
Thank you.
Grace.
Thank you. I was wondering if this data is regularly monitored and addressed? Kind of wondering, you know, that it's, we see 2017 and 2021 data and it has taken probably over a month or two, I'm losing track of time, to get this presentation together, just when it seems like if the city is already actively working towards inclusive hiring practices, I would just think that this would be something that's like a regular kind of practice or review.
So I'm going to answer that a couple of ways. One, one is our focus is really on like filling individual positions and having the conversation about how do we get a diverse applicant pool for a particular position? This information is available in our HR system. We don't normally put it in charts and graphs like that, or we haven't routinely done that in the past. I mean, we're able to do that, it just takes a little bit of, bit of time to do that. And and of course, we also file the EEO floor report with the EEOC as required.
Yeah, it's just something that I would like to see this being like a regular kind of review and monitoring that data historically. If we're going to be a hiring body that espouses to have diverse and intentional hiring, it seems really important to have that data to monitor what we're doing and is it being effective just on a regular basis?
Shandra, you have a comment?
Yes, and and sort of to pick up where Grace left, it's knowing that, knowing what strategies you have in place and whether or not they're being effective. So you mentioned meeting with the Human Relations Equity Officer. I think I got that right. So will you be able to let us know what strategies you all come up with and share that with us? And then how will you evaluate those, the effectiveness of those strategies? I guess, monitoring the the diversity number.
Yeah, I think we could come back and talk about strategies probably later in the summer. We probably won't start that process until after July 1, just because of the, the push now to get the budget across the finish line and and there's quite a bit of work with that.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mary Alice.
Elizabeth, how easy or difficult would it be to add in something into the budget that just talks about the diversity of our workforce? Just a couple of of slides, you know, based on what you've done, because I think it would be relevant to, when we look at the budget, it's a good timing if we're going to do something more periodic?
Um, that's possible. Just let's, let let me think and talk with Liz about what makes sense. If we're going to do this periodically, what, what kind of schedule makes sense for doing that around other things that we have happen?
And I, just, just for the other council members, when I first came on city council, we had a presentation by the fire department, who's really trying to actively recruit people, local people, diverse, have a diverse pool of people. I think they were really successful in the recruitment back, it was about three and a half years ago. And it was a really good strategy that they implemented. So I would be great to have more strategies on departments that maybe want to achieve more diverse workforce.
And I would say the police department has had success in that area as well. Sharice.
I guess the comment, I have more of a comment than a question. And one of those, it's basically, I, I think this is a good idea as far as keeping in, trying to keep in step with Gare and in step with the resolution to end structural racism, that we begin to be more proactive in our hiring practices as well as our practices in informing the council as to, you know, how, how we are, what methods we are using, what strategies we are using to try to make sure we have to be, I, I think the city has to be a model for that in in trying to keep to that resolution. So I think it is a good idea that we maybe, you know, city councils even after us, keep, keep and keep that in practice if possible. I appreciate your presentation, Elizabeth, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Liz. We will move on to public input. And if you'd like to speak to the Urbana City Council, please raise your hand. We'll start with Evelyn B. Underwood.
I muted myself, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I didn't get my information. Usually, I've been getting agendas and all from the city. I had put my name on the list and I haven't been getting it of late. And this is the time I really need it, because it's difficult for me to get online, to see it. And when you pulled J off, I didn't know how many of those you pulled off, Mayor Marlin.
I'm not, I don't. I'm not sure I understand what you said. Can you repeat that?
Oh, I was saying, when you pulled J off, I didn't know how many of those appointments you pulled off. So I don't know what I can comment on.
The appointments are for the staff appointments. So all 19 appointments will be considered in two weeks.
Okay, so it's just the appointments are persons on commissions?
No, city staff.
So you pulled the city staff off?
For tonight.
Executive Department, the executive department and all of that, is that still on?
No, that's pulled off.
Okay, so what's left?
As far as appointments, what's left are the board and commission appointments.
That's what I was asking, that's what I was asking. Okay, so I hold my comments and I talk to my city council and try to email some people about the comments that I have during the, during the interim, during those two weeks there. What I, I heard the presentations. I heard the wonderful comments about, from the council persons. And I think it's important that we do some of the things that they say, that they said. But what I would like to see is a lot more people. I know we have the University of Illinois here, and I know it's different. I've been here many, many years, more than 60 in Champaign-Urbana, most of them in Urbana. And I believe that it's important to have some positions in this city so they can have a stake in this city. It's important, especially when we're talking about service position. I don't know, I shouldn't say especially, because I have some more. So I just, I hold that, what I think is important. I remember when fire people used to have to live in Urbana. I remember when, if I can recall correctly, I know fire, for an example, and maybe police people too, had to live in Urbana. Because I think it's important for them to have a stake in Urbana. It's important for them to know the community and work with the people in the community. So I know I'm rambling, sorry about that. I think I'll stop with that and try to email. See, I don't, the problem is, I don't have, I'm going to have to get some phone numbers. And I guess some people don't want their phone numbers out there. Some people, I can't go upstairs to my email because I'm handicapped. I have a handicapping condition. So maybe I'm going to have to try to find some phone numbers and call some of the city council members other than my own, because I think what I have to say should be citywide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Eddie Pratt Jr. You can go ahead and unmute. Can we unmute, please? Okay, I'm going to move on to Tracy Chung and we'll come back to Eddie Pratt Jr. Tracy, we can't hear you. Can you turn your volume up?
Uh, yeah, it's louder already. Can you hear me?
No.
Okay, that's weird. I, this is what I do every week.
Tracy, we can't hear you. I can't hear you. Can anyone else hear?
Just very low volume. We can try our best if that's the best you can do, but a higher volume would be much better.
Yeah.
I think there's something wrong with your system.
Okay, now we can hear you.
We can hear you now.
Okay, I, I think there's something wrong with your system. This is what I do every week. Anyway, okay. Are you sure you can hear me? This is really weird.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm Tracy Chung. This is an excellent time to reflect on events that happened a year ago in 2020 when Chief Seraphin was up for reappointment. Last year, a record number of residents voiced their concerns to council. Hundred and forty-six residents took time to speak or write to council and dozens more were outside the city building protesting the reappointment of Chief Seraphin. Residents called for Seraphin not to be reappointed or for his appointment to be delayed until a thorough, transparent investigation into the assault on Aliyah Lewis by UPD officers was performed. Residents voiced how it would be irresponsible and further erosion of public trust for Seraphin to be reappointed. At the same time, residents called for updated and safer police policies and a deep assessment of the chief's direct and indirect involvement in the Aliyah Lewis case. Mayor Marlin, you vouched for Chief Seraphin and his character and called for us to give him a chance. Mary Alice, you supported the appointment of Seraphin and tried to assure the public that Seraphin's appointment was at will and could be terminated at any time. As expected, events over the past year have shown that these were meaningless words and promises. Looking back, we now know that the internal and paid-for investigation was nothing more than a rubber stamp to clear officers of wrongdoing. Only when residents stepped in, Seraphin acknowledged misconduct in the quietest way. Up till today, we have not had a fruitful conversation on UPD officers' excessive use of force and how to prevent it. Even worse still, we are seeing superficial PR efforts by the city and UPD under Seraphin's leadership to make it sound like there is change. But let's ask the hard questions. Where are the updated policies? Where are the meaningful changes that residents have asked for in the, in the UPD policies? How is it that under the leadership of Chief Seraphin, today, we have documented misconduct by UPD officers? We have UPD officers still using excessive force without any effort of this de-escalation? We have seen UPD officers lying on reports and not following policies and ordinances, but still no consequences to these actions? There has not been any meaningful change over the past year. We still have a police department that does not want to acknowledge its officers' misconduct and does not want to investigate itself. For example, recently, we had city administrator Carol Mitten single-handedly reject a civilian police complaint. This particular person must have felt severely wronged by UPD officers as they tried more than once to submit a complaint and even risking retribution by filing the complaint while their case was pending. UPD policies say that all complaints, formal or informal, will be investigated. Did UPD investigate this complaint? All signs point to no, and I'm hoping you guys will follow up on this. Let's also talk about Deputy Chief Richard Souls. This man has lied to CPRB to suppress video evidence during TASER reviews made light of dangerous misconduct and downplayed the gravity of the situation. So I urge city council members, especially now that you have another week, to read and listen to the many concerned letters from last year. Ask yourself what meaningful change has happened between last year and today that warrants Seraphin and Souls' reappointment? I hope you can distinguish between actual change and accountability versus all the fluff and feel-good activities that Seraphin will claim to have done, such as listening sessions, resolutions, packs with organizations, printed posters. To start, ask questions such as, if a similar incident were to happen today, would the outcome be the same? Would Aliyah Lewis still have been assaulted? Would the juvenile that did not fit the description at all, other than being black, be made to lie on the ground in cuffs? Would Seraphin still claim his officers' actions were warranted? Would the officers still be clear of wrongdoing? Would any updates in UPD policies have prevented this from happening? Why are we still seeing all this misconduct during TASER reviews that have no accountability? Why? Thank you.
Okay, next is, I will try Eddie Pratt Jr. again. Go ahead. Can you make sure your microphone volume is turned up? Okay, we'll come back. Alan Max Axelrod.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, just a quick PSA, real quick. Sometimes when you log into the Zoom, it may turn your Zoom volume down and not your system volume. So folks who are troubleshooting, please look into that. Could you put the clock up, please? Thank you. So my name is Alan Max Axelrod. I am a co-chair of the Champaign-Urbana DSA. I'm speaking to you all again about the Short Term Workforce Training Program. Our membership voted to endorse this measure to request that the city of Urbana commit $1 million to this program. The fundamental message of this is that stipends work. This is not something that I just espouse. This is something that I personally practice. The only reason that I was able to afford a home was because when I was a graduate employee, I had a stipend that was in excess of my cost of living, and I was able to save up money when I lived at Oklahoma State University to get a down payment on a home in the city of Urbana. So I mean, in one sense, you're stuck with me that way, so I apologize. But in the other sense, like, that's real stability that you can offer members of our community. And I would strongly recommend that the city of Urbana think about that critically when providing those funds. This is something that works on a direct human level, regardless of the other dynamics at play. Case in point, when my neighbor needed to have her children transported to and from school, I noticed when I handed one of them a flyer that they did not have very good reading skills. So you know what I did? I brought them over to the Urbana Free Library. And I didn't care what reading level book they chose. I didn't care how colorful it was and how few words there were. Every book that they read aloud to me, I would get them one thing from the cafe counter shop, counter for them for. And that is something that, since they have moved and when I am flying in the community and they see me, they ask about that. That is at a very basic level. Further, a constant barrier to single mothers and to families that are struggling due to past debts or inherited debts is the absence of a stipend. It is not enough for their tuition to be covered. It is not enough for their fees to be covered. If we want people to take advantage of this pilot program, we need them to be able to focus their full attention on being the best possible students that they can be for those $50,000 starting wage jobs. These jobs are nursing jobs. These jobs are trucking jobs. These jobs are forklift operating jobs. These are situations that could lead to not only providing people those jobs, but increasing their tendency to stay in this community. Now that being said, I also want to bring up an errata and a personal remark to the city council when it comes to homelessness. See, the thing is that a while ago, I had talked about how there were a couple of counties in central Illinois that had ended veteran homelessness. I unfortunately vastly undercounted the counties. In a one-hour radius, there is no other county except for Macon County that has veteran chronic homelessness listed as not solved. That is to say, the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness lists Mason County, Menard County, Logan County, Christian County, Shelby County, Multry County, Coles County, Edgar County, Douglas County, Vermilion County, it's sorry, the Texas is small, McLean County, DeWitt County, Pyatt County, Ford County, Iroquois County, Will County, and one other that I can't read that is geographically locked with all the rest. That one is Iroquois County, Kenkeke County. All of those counties have ended veteran chronic homelessness four years plus before us in some cases. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Bianca, is it Nihan?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to echo my support. Also, the other co-chair of the CU DSA, we signed on to sponsor the SWIFT program or to support it. I wanted to mention that it echoes a lot of the issues that you mentioned, that your presentation mentioned regarding the diversity. As we probably will know, the majority of people that would sign on to this program that are interested will be people of color, so having an opportunity with that stipend to give people opportunities to further education and provide well-paying jobs for people in this community would be a great way to increase those diversity numbers that we love to look at. I love to also echo the sentiment of having a homeless shelter in Champaign. It's heartbreaking seeing, walking, driving past and seeing people begging for money on the streets. I know no one wants to see that. So if we had the opportunity and the ability to provide some type of shelter for these people, that would be great. I know going forward, petitioning, we will, CU DSA will be mentioning these programs and the opportunities that they provide for us. So I hope that we have the ability to increase the amount of people that can go into these programs from these communities to increase, one, of course, decrease our diversity numbers for them to look great, but also to improve the lives of the people that need it the most. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Brandy McCoy.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, so I'm basically just gonna repeat everything that Bianca just said. I just wanted to show my support for the SWIFT program, and I really think that that's a a great investment, a great opportunity to invest in the community. And also, yeah, I think we really need to, I know that there is work being done, but you know, I just think we need to expand what we're doing for the homeless population in our communities. Our community and surrounding communities. It's just, it's something that it's something that a lot of people feel like they can't come back out of. And once you get into that state of despair, it makes it even harder to come back out of it. So I just, I think it's really important that we focus our time and energy there in addition to the other places that obviously need time and focus, so. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Julie Watkins.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My, okay, excuse me. Hello, my name is Julie Watkins. I'm a frequent listener and I sometimes comment at these meetings. I appreciate public input and I appreciate when council members answer public input. The CPRB public input needs an answer. The multiple concerns I've heard, those concerns have not been refuted either by other public input or by council answer. That's bad. Maybe there was general concern by a member about the board, but I don't remember any specific concerns being answered. I don't think we want that. My second topic for input is the apartment building the township bought. Maybe it's been solved. I hope so. Anyway, I feel it was appropriate that renters in distress to come where they had a right to speak, and it's a plight of renters everywhere. Now, if it had been Blackstone that bought the building, they'd be out of luck. But it is Urbana, and why it happened is because of a program for homeless help. I believe that matters. It's an extra and unfortunate factor on why this is an Urbana issue. Nobody wanted a mess, but it became a mess. Blackstone does what it does because it's capitalism and the system allows it. It's a reason why Urbana and all communities need a strong housing program. I'm hoping that together, the tenants and the township and our community can get together and solve this with the least possible additional upset. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up, Andrea Rudy, did you want to speak?
No, I don't think I had my hand up. I apologize. I'm watching it from my phone, so I apologize.
Yeah, your hand is showing. Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Let's try, there's a phone number ending in 105. Did you wish to speak or can you identify yourself?
They've been unmuted, so now the caller will just need to press star six to unmute themselves. Star six, and then they'll be able to talk.
Okay.
Okay, this is Gary Applestead. I'm waiting for the first item under J, under J.
Okay, thank you, Gary. We'll get back to you then.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next up is Bo Barber.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. I'm just calling in because I've heard other people talking about the SWIFT program. And I wanted to echo support for that because of the ways it's helped people. You know, it's not an end-all-be-all solution. It's just not gonna solve all the problems that we have, but it's definitely something that helps a lot. I've had friends that have gone into that program. And programs like it, SWIFT's not the only thing. There's other things in other areas, but this is what we have here that's rarely available and it just, you know, it could use more funding from the ARP. I had a friend that grew up in a really rough household back when he was a kid. And he had a lot of traumatic experiences with that, including stepfamily that tried to hurt him on several occasions. And he's had a lot of trauma through that. And he struggled a lot in school. He was a wicked smart kid. And, but we were, me and him were like brothers, so we hung out all the time. And I don't want to say it was just, but like, we were somebody that he could turn to and talk to and get some support. And so we had directed him toward programs like, hey, maybe you could look into like a one-year training program like SWIFT. I can't remember what he eventually ended up going with, programs like SWIFT or what helped him get some kind of job out of high school. And actually kind of, you know, get himself to be financially independent and and to be able to live on his own, and he owns his own house now. And he's doing good. He's, you know, it's programs like that that help keep people, it improves their overall quality of life. It helps with your mentality because if you're not having to worry about whether or not you're gonna have dinner, you know, today, or if you're gonna have to try and wait till tomorrow, you know, better income. Anybody who's ever said, you know, what is it, money doesn't buy you happiness, has never had that little money before. So it's, I think that's something that is, it's easy to do, just funnel some funds to it. I mean, God, there's enough coming to Champaign-Urbana as it is that, oh, there's gotta be something that we can put towards it. But it's a program that I think can help a lot of people. It's, 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 it's kind of a no, it's kind of a no-brainer. It's a win-win situation for everybody because then they're gonna stay here, you know, your overall living conditions improve, there's less community violence from stuff like that. You know, because if you're in better situations, there's less crime, if people have better incomes, they're less likely to commit crime because you're committing crime. One of the things that contributes to that is poor living conditions. People get desperate. It's not the only reason, but it's definitely a significant contributing factor. Yeah, I mean, that's all I really had to say on that, so have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. We'll try, let's see, Sarah Nixon.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hello, city council. This is Sarah Nixon. I divide my time between rural Champaign County and Urbana. And I'd like to address agenda item J.4 or line four, which thankfully, due to pressure from our older people, has now been pulled. It used to be that officer misconduct would result in disciplinary issues and that disciplinary issues would be barriers to career advancement, but not any longer. Certainly not at the city of Urbana. I will not reiterate the reasons for grave concerns over the proposed reappointments, which reasons other members of the public have repeatedly brought to the city's attention. But I will simply join those who are calling upon you to deny those proposed reappointments of individuals whose work record, whose service record are not in line with Urbana's values and vision for a city comprised of departments that operate with professionalism and integrity. Those who commit misconduct, who cover for the misconduct of others and who then go on to promote those whom they have shielded from accountability for their misconduct should have no place in Urbana's seats of command and seats of power. And next, I would like to remind you that affirmative hiring practices predicated on gender and race in and of themselves are proven to be very often not the solution. From the perspective of groups marginalized and harmed by law enforcement bias and privilege, for example, increasing workforce diversity has proven not to be a guaranteed solution. So you can recruit women and people of color and still end up with the same harmful discriminatory practices, biases, and toxic workplace cultures. Does there come a critical tipping point? I don't know. What if we pursued aggressive affirmative hiring policies to the point where our police department were to be comprised solely of black women? Would groups that are being targeted for abuse by the Urbana police experience a safer, more respectful policing in such a scenario? I'm not sure, and I don't know if we can find out. Of course, I do agree with the call for city hires to reflect city demographics, and that includes more women and more people of color. But I do think that gender and race can become red herrings, and I think that excellence in leadership is what matters most. Leadership that is trauma-informed, racial bias-informed, gender bias-informed, domestic violence-informed, leadership marked by integrity, honesty, character, vision, and capability. Those are some of the core qualities and values that seem to be missing in some of Urbana's organizations. Just as an example, the fact that Urbana did have a female police chief or intern chief for a brief period, and nothing appears to have measurably changed under her leadership comes to mind. In fact, the culture at the Urbana Police Department is as toxic today as it was during the years when domestic violence and child abuse, which I was powerless to stop, forced me to interface with officers and investigators who were determined to portray us as liars about the abuse we were enduring. Finally, also, or last week, the mayor announced a series of board reappointments but didn't provide information on the appointees to either the council or the public. Of course, it's entirely possible that the reappointments were excellent choices, but it did not seem appropriate for the mayor to be unilaterally making these appointment decisions and asking the council to rubber stamp them. So I just want to applaud those older people who raised the issue and also who proposed term limits. So I appreciate those council members who asked those questions, and I'd like to encourage the rest of you to support that kind of, those kinds of questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we're gonna try one last time Eddie Pratt Jr. You appear to be unmuted. So Eddie, I, I encourage you, it seems we have technical issues here, but I would encourage you to email your input to the city council. And that would be at citycouncil@urbanaillinois.us. And everyone will see it and it can be entered into the meeting record. We just can't connect with you tonight. Okay, does anyone else wish to address the council? We do have one hand left and that's the applicant for the zoning case that's going to be heard later. Okay. All right, we'll move on to, um, council input and communications. Does anyone, uh, Jay?
Yeah, I have a, a quick follow-up to the, the changes to the agenda. Um, just want to provide some clarification. I'm glad to know we have more time to, to review the folks who are up for reappointment.
Could I, could I interrupt you just a second, Jason? Can you put the clock up for three minutes? Thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Um, but I think it's important to clarify that we did not receive the list of people who were up for reappointment until last Thursday. The conversations that we had had previously were about the potential shift for some positions from uh, mayoral appointment to civil service and that this was not a conversation that has been had with council. So I think that's an important point of clarification that while there's a, a need for additional conversations and I look forward to seeing information, specifically or ordinances or statutes about appointment and reappointment processes. But to clarify that this is not information that we have had access to for an extended period of time, I think is an important point to raise. Um, I also understand that our form of governance is unusual, but I think that Urbana is unusual and I think that's a strength. The level of participation and engagement that our residents have in part through their city council is something that I'm very proud of. And I think that it's important that as we are making comparisons to other cities, that we don't lose track of who Urbana is and the fact that this is an opportunity for us to be leaders and not followers. So I just want to clarify that yes, let's have more information. I'm excited to see that and I would like to see the, the in writing information about what the process is for making those determinations in terms of how appointments and reappointments are made. But I do want to clarify that this is not information that we've had extended access to. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Sharice.
Um, yes, I just wanted to, um, mention that, um, last week that we had a caller that, uh, in one of our mini meetings that we had, um, that recommended, um, that there be, um, cameras and lights, uh, uh, put on, you know, on some of our streets so that we may better be able to investigate some of the, the crime, the shootings that have been, uh, that's been going on and particularly on this end of town, even though it's kind of starts in champagne and it bleeds over into Urbana. And she has, uh, just done a wonderful job at gathering signatures and people who are, uh, people who are in concert with that thinking. I, uh, would recommend and actually I'm, I support her idea that maybe that is something that needs to happen, uh, because even though I have had several conversations with, with different, uh, officers and, and the chief and the assistant chief, deputy chief, uh, regarding the, the shootings and, and the violence that have happened. And I have been, you know, informed several times about, you know, unfortunately, it's kids killing kids. And it is in, is very important to us and to, and particularly to my ward where I am pushing for a grocery store and other businesses to open over in, in this area. That, and maybe folks just don't understand how expensive it is to live in a, an area that is somewhat redlined. Uh, when your insurance is higher because of, of the, um, the, uh, the, the crime element in, in that part of town or businesses choose to not uh, settle in that part of town and it is a disservice to all of us here in Ward Three when we cannot keep our own citizens safe. So I just want to, uh, let people in my ward know that I support this particular idea and, um, and I'm hoping that we can discuss it more and hopefully even be, um, get on board with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, James?
Yes, um, uh, first, uh, as always, I want to thank the public for participating in the meeting. I would always like to see more of the citizens of Urbana commenting and joining us for the conversation as we decide what, what the city needs going forward. Um, I had the great privilege and honor to join, uh, the Silverwood neighborhood, uh, on Saturday as they celebrated, um, five years of focus on that neighborhood with supported by Silver Hearts, a group that was established uh, to bring attention to the needs of the neighborhood and to build community there. And I was also, uh, happy to, to receive, uh, this um, um, picture from, uh, the, the Silver Hearts group, which is for the city. It's not for me. It's for us. And so I'm, I'm showing you here, but soon we'll be together and I will bring it to the city building and decide, um, how we're going to, how we're going to hang it. And, um, it was a great event. Uh, there were, there were people from the neighborhood coming out, uh, in, enjoying the opportunity that, uh, June 11th had provided for us to be more open and get together in a more open way and lots of great conversations with the citizens from that, from that neighborhood. Um, and I look forward to engaging with them more as we move forward. I will say, I do, I do appreciate, uh, the discussion, uh, that I was invited to about the appointment process uh, for, um, staff. I, I believe strongly that department heads and members of the city staff that are in those senior leadership positions should be continued to be reviewed and for appointment. But I, I am, I am kind of concerned that staff, um, lower down in the organization are put up for reappointment every year. I, I am a strong believer that in a governance kind of situation where, which the city council is in, particularly in an aldermanic mayor, um, situation, you know, we, we provide advice and consent to the appointments that the mayor, uh, makes for leadership in those areas. But it's really not the place in my mind for city council to get into decisions of employment beyond the department heads. I think that's a dangerous place to be, um, because we do in fact have seats that have a political uh, process associated with them. So it starts to make our, um, civil servants at risk to being, um, subject to the whims of political winds and I, and I don't, I think our employees deserve better than that. So I hope, I look forward to the future conversation there. Thank you.
Grace.
Thank you. Um, just also wanted to say again, thank you to the public for your input. I appreciate the participation and diligence. Um, also thank you to the mayor for acknowledging that we need more information on the reappointees. I did spend some time researching these individuals, um, and I would definitely, um, expect and prefer that that information be provided on a, you know, more internal, um, informed basis about job performance, background qualifications. I know that we, we might not need everything, but more than a name would definitely be great. So I appreciate that and I look forward to having more information before we vote on these reappointments. Um, I was also, um, wondering, and I'm not sure when's the appropriate time, so I'll just mention it now, about changing appointments to civil service. Seems like the council would need to vote on that since the mayor and the council deemed such positions necessary to be appointed in the first place. So I was wondering if, um, you know, it seems like we would need a vote to deem them unnecessary to be appointed. Um, also, I would like more information on the appointment and reappointment review kind of process or how that's decided. Um, so I definitely agree with that. I also agree that we need to address gun violence and I would like to see that done in a proactive preventative kind of way. First followers and some others are working on a comprehensive program model with wraparound services. And hopefully we'll have a presentation here at city council, um, soon in the next month or two. Um, I hope that we can work together with multiple stakeholders with the community and the city to address inequity, violence and misconduct. Especially as the city has that resolution to do so. And there's a lot of really important issues. So I look forward to and hope that we can all join forces and work together to address these issues.
Shandra.
All right. So I really appreciated the, um, workforce diversity presentation today. Um, I have been looking forward to seeing those numbers, um, and much like one, one, um, resident commented that you can't just, um, sort of hire diverse people and expect, you know, your, your diversity and equity, um, to grow in, in, in your organization. It's also about the culture. Um, so in these, um, appointments that we're considering, we also have to look at how they're, um, they're behaving or how they're, um, representative of, of our community as well. And so, um, I'm glad to see that we are getting a little bit more time on appointments because I do have some further questions, um, and I'm looking forward to interacting with staff to get those answered, but, um, that the diversity and, um, equity is, is very important to me. And like someone said, like, we should be the standard. We can make the model for the rest of our community.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Chris?
Yeah, I just want to echo, uh, other council members', uh, request for more information about the appointments. Um, I would like, uh, you know, their education, their years on, with city staff, their job duties, what they accomplished this year, why they want to stay on with the city of Urbana and what they hope to accomplish next year. And that just needs to be on one page, um, and can be written by them. I don't expect the executive staff to compile that, but the nominee, the candidates should, you know, write their own little one-page, um, you know, information sheet for us. And that would be a big help because, uh, the way this was going, put council in a very odd spot. I mean, I couldn't tell my constituents why I would reappoint these people, though the, the vote would be over a half a million dollars of salaries over the next year and I, and I wouldn't have no reason to give my constituents why I voted for that. Nor could I vote no because to vote no would essentially put a stick in the spokes and grind this government to a screech and halt. So, um, having that information would be really helpful and that it's public, posted on the website. So the public can see who's getting re, uh, who's up for reappointment and, uh, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Mary Alice.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to comment on something that Grace and, uh, Sharice are talking about, the gun violence, uh, that we're experiencing in this community. And I, I don't believe that either one of you were suggesting this, but I just want to be clear. A, I think that everybody has a right to feel safe in their own neighborhood and, um, so I can understand why some of that safety might be, um, helped by having cameras in the neighborhood. Would like to hear more about that conversation. And B, I definitely think that we should, um, be thinking, uh, a little outside of the box of what we can do to prevent it from occurring in the first place. So I think that it's not an either or situation. I think we really have to do both. Um, and I think there've been some interesting ideas that we've heard over the course of several weeks. I think some people talked about, uh, community centers. People talked about workforce development. First Follower certainly has a really good program. So I think it's, it's going to be multifaceted. Um, there is not one silver bullet that we can do that would address gun violence in our community. And I think we need to be open to having both of those conversations because I do think that it, everybody should have a right to be and feel safe in their own home. Um, and not to feel like they're going to be retaliated against, uh, if they say something, um, that somebody gets, uh, is a suspect or gets arrested or something. But we also need to, to give people opportunities to do something aside from turn to violence. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay. Uh, did we miss anybody? I think that's everybody. Um, I did want to clarify one comment that was made about the process for this year. City council was emailed the draft list of appointments on May 28th of this year. So they, so folks have had that in their hands. At, this included, uh, department heads, et cetera. At the bottom of the email, it did note that we had intended and are still considering recommending moving to civil service several other positions, including police lieutenants, fire division chiefs, grants manager, and, um, senior advisor for an integrated tech strategy development and information technology. However, based on, um, feedback that staff received during, um, meetings with council member, that, the meetings with council members to brief them on the process, the, um, concerns were expressed about moving those positions to civil service this year. And so that's why I took that into account and, um, did not recommend that that move be made this year or remove them from the list. But just, just so you know, folks did receive draft of that. And also, and this is when I was out of town, but I believe you also received a list of the positions that had been moved off the list, um, the previous year, which include the sustainability officer, administrative services manager and financial services manager. A little bit of history here is that, um, our city code requires very few of these appointments to actually be appointed and brought to the council for consideration. Over the years, and this has been predating me, positions were created, they were added to the list. I really don't know what the rationale for that was. It was, there seems to be no consistent, there's, there's, there seemed to be no consistency in that, except the list of appointees grew year by year to, at one point, I believe it was well over thirty. I think it was like thirty-five or more. So they made no sense, particularly when you look at, um, the responsibilities of particular positions, whether or not they're involved in policy development, how many people they manage and that sort of thing. So we've been making a concerted effort to, to reduce that list to, to move a lot of people into civil service positions. So they do have some job protections, but they also, so it made sense from an HR standpoint. And that's the process that we've been following the last few years. So, um, we are, again, based on council feedback on, on, from the discussions that was, that were held, um, with staff, the, the list was developed that you see before you, but it was shared on, I believe the email was sent May 28th. But nonetheless, um, we will continue the conversations. And again, I invite anyone who, um, has specific questions, we will set up individual meetings again and then provide additional information about these, um, about these, uh, appointments. And we do have some information from a legal and procedural standpoint as well. Okay. Let's move on to, uh,
Shandra has her hand up.
Yes.
Um, if it's appropriate to speak now, thank you. Um, I, I had a question about the grants manager position. Um, you said you weren't, we weren't going to move any positions over to civil service, yet that remains sort of what?
That one, that one, that one I do intend to move to civil service.
I don't think that any position should be moved to civil service right now. And I would, I mean, we can put that on the, the agenda for, for next week's Cow meeting if you'd like, but, um, that's just my input. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take that into account. Thank you. Okay, I'll take that into account. Thank you. Jaya.
I, I appreciate that point of clarification. And I, I should clarify as well that yes, we received a draft, but not all of the names that were sent to us on Thursday were on that draft. So I, I think that's an important clarification.
Yeah, they were, they were listed, it was listed as a draft and, um, and then the positions that currently are on the list are, were shown on the bottom there. So yeah, it was a draft. But it's a work in progress. Okay, we will move on to unfinished business. I don't believe there is any. We have one item under reports of standing committees and that'll come out of council member Sharice Hershey.
Thank, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, I thought that we moved the ordinance to the consent agenda.
Uh, you did. Typically, there's more than one item on the consent agenda, but in this case, it doesn't matter, but yes, it was on the consent agenda.
Okay.
So if you want to report it out as being on the consent agenda, I think we can, we can deal with that.
Okay, just on any agenda. I would like to move for approval, um, from committee of the whole. Uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero six dash zero one nine and ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map, Europa House eight oh two, uh, West Oregon Street, plan case number two four two zero, him dash twenty-one. And can I get a second?
I'll second that.
And just for clarification, that is as consent agenda item.
Consent agenda item, okay.
Okay, moved by Sharice, started by Mary Alice.
It's the only thing on any agenda.
Well, the quick, please call the roll.
No, we have to have discussion, right?
Not if it's on the consent.
That's right. All right, no discussion. Let's call the roll.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Sharice.
No problem.
Uh, reports of special committees. Don't believe we have any reports of officers. Okay. New business. First item under new business is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero six dash zero two zero and ordinance approving a major variance, which is the garage at two thirteen West Illinois Street, ZBA case number twenty twenty-one, M A G dash O two. And I believe Cat Trotter will be presenting this. And we do have the applicant in the audience, Mr. Gary Applestott.
Hi, everybody.
New.
Right. Uh, this is a request by Gary Applestott for a major variance to allow the applicant to rebuild his garage four feet from the west property line in a required front yard at two thirteen West Illinois Street. The same variance was applied for last December, um, and was considered by the ZBA at the February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Uh, the case went to city council on March eighth and was defeated. However, the applicant was not given an opportunity to make a statement at that meeting. Uh, so he asked that it be reconsidered by the city council. Staff received two letters of public input. Both were in favor of the major variance and they were included in your packet. Um, and at the nineteenth, or May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the zoning board of appeals voted to forward the case to city council with a recommendation of approval. This is a location map of the property. Uh, it's located in, uh, the northeastern portion of West Urbana. Uh, the applicant has owned the property since twenty fourteen. The existing garage encroaches into the required front yard along Cedar Street, four feet from the west property line and has been on the property for over one hundred years. It is deteriorating and needs to be replaced. Here's a zoning map of the property. It is owned R two, single-family residential and is surrounded by R two zoning. Uh, it's a corner lot, which means it has four, or fifteen foot required front yards on both the north and, um, west property lines, so along Illinois Street and Cedar Street. This is a site photo of the garage. Um, the narrow lot width creates a practical difficulty in rebuilding the garage fifteen feet from the front property line. The home also encroaches into the required front yard along Cedar Street and is only eight feet from the front property line. There is a garden in the rear yard that would need to be removed if the garage was rebuilt further east. Uh, this is another photo of the garage and it runs along that alley to the south side. Engineering has reviewed the request and, uh, stated that while moving the garage further east would improve the range of vision for drivers, it would result in removal of the garden and significant paving of the rear yard. Uh, there are no significant concerns from engineering that should prevent the garage from being rebuilt in its previous location. I mean, in its existing location, sorry. This is the photo of the garden and the yard. Um, to summarize, staff found that the application meets the requirements for the requested variance. Uh, the lot was plotted to be smaller and more narrowed than what is now required by the zoning ordinance. Um, and the lot size and configuration create a practical difficulty in rebuilding the garage fifteen feet from the property line. The existing garage has been on the property for over a hundred years, where it has not caused issues for the property owner or adjacent properties. And the new garage would be built, rebuilt in generally the same location. The variance does not represent the many, minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements as their, uh, garage would be rebuilt in the required front yard to retain the existing garden. Uh, the city council has the following options in the requested major variance case. Uh, approve the variances requested, approve the variance with certain terms and conditions, or deny the variance request. And as I said earlier, um, at the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the zoning board of appeals recommended approval, um, of the requested variance with the condition that the garage generally conforms to the submitted site plan. Staff concurs and the applicant is here to make a statement and answer any questions about the property. I can take any technical questions as well.
Let's get a statement from the applicant and then we'll go to technical questions for either you or the applicant. We unmute Gary, please. Go ahead.
Hi. Uh, this is Gary Applestott. Um, my wife and I bought lots of property, you know, in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, the reason we chose the location was because of the nature of the neighborhood. Um, the house originally was built in the early eighteen nineties. The garage was built in the early nineteen hundreds. And we appreciated the nature of the, of the neighborhood. Uh, in the process of looking at renovation of the things that need to be renovated, we found, um, a number of things that needed to be addressed through the zoning board in the city to bring the current use of the, um, structure uh, into compliance with city code. Um, the, so it's been approved as a smaller lot size. It's been approved as a duplex. It's been zoned or approved as fewer parking spaces. And now we're at the point of wanting to keep the nature of the property by rebuilding the existing garage in its existing location with one exception. Uh, we would be moving the garage slightly, uh, north, a few feet. The alleyway in that block has been contorted by the location of utility poles going through the alley. So that the loc, current location of the garage within a foot of the easement of the alley creates a problem with the large garbage trucks going up and down the alley when they're trying to veer past the utility poles that were added. So the rebuilding of the garage would in, in, involve moving it a few feet to the north to give the garbage trucks better clearance to get through that alley. But we'd like to maintain the, um, structure in the style that it currently is and in the location that it currently is, so that we can maintain the green space and the garden space and the ambiance of the neighborhood. So I'll be open for questions.
Are there any, uh, questions for either staff or Gary Applestott? Mary Alice.
Um, so I, I know that this is the second time that this case has come. And I know that one of the reasons that, um, the applicant didn't want to have the garage meet the minimum requirements was due to, to the, to the garden. Was there any consideration to, um, moving it somewhat back from that front yard and, and removing part of that garden, or is that not part of the conversation?
Uh, may I answer, Cat?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, it was part of the conversation. The problem with moving the garage further to the east is that the shading effect would damage more of the garden. Um, that coupled with the fact that it has been in a location that it's been in without incident or problem. The fact that it, um, is, you know, a, a part of the original structure of the neighborhood. So those questions did come up. Another question had been raised about changing the access to the garage from Cedar Street to the alley. But with the, um, narrowness of the alley and the size of vehicles that are, uh, renters or tenants normally have, that would be next impossible for them to have the turn radius to get into the size of the garage that it currently is. So I believe Cat mentioned that the engineering had looked at that. And then it was decided that leaving it in the orientation that it is would be workable.
Grace. Thank you. Um, so I say, I appreciate the information in these ordinances. I feel like you guys give us a lot of information and reasoning behind it and I really appreciate that. It's easy to follow and lots of background there. Um, I was going to look at the site plan in more details. It says exhibit D, um, but I did notice the exhibits are labeled like C and then there's some stuff in between. And then the next one that's labeled is G. Um, so there's not a D labeled. Is it these, um, four images on page five?
Yes. I should have labeled those, but yeah, that is the site plan.
That's great. Yeah, just small detail, I said. I appreciate all the useful information, just a small thing. I could find exhibit D better with a label on it. Um, and so the plans, I'm wondering if that's the extent of the plan? I don't know if that's a typical thing or if there's usually more details or, um, kind of how that works.
Yeah, I'll summarize, uh, procedurally and then Gary can hopefully give some more detail on, um, the building plans. But typically, um, when applicants apply for a variance, the level of site plan varies depending on the extent of the project. In this case, um, because it's a less significant building plan than say a single-family home or something much more detailed than that, we asked for the, um, footprint of the garage. And the setback in this case is listed with the variance. Um, I could make a note on that site plan as well. Um, but I don't think that Gary has hired a contractor or an architect for the garage at this point in time. So the detail of this site plan is less significant than say if he had already, um, hired an architect for his garage, then we had maybe asked for a more significant site plan.
And I agree with that.
Now, I was just wondering in general too, with these kinds of things, um, what the, I don't know, obligation, obligation or kind of enforcement or follow-through is with it? Um, not to say this would happen in this case, but just in general, if we agreed to something and someone built it bigger or different than in the plan, I'm just wondering how that's handled.
Sure, and I'll take a stab at that. And Kevin is also on the line, he's our principal planner. Um, he can hopefully back me up a little bit. Um, but typically we would, um, enforce upon the site plan that is approved with an ordinance. So that's a document that is recorded. Um, if this variance is approved, the site plan will be recorded with the ordinance. Um, and that's something that the applicant would be held to legally, uh, obligationally. Um, if something is built not to the site plan that was submitted, they are out of compliance from a planning and zoning perspective. And we can enforce upon that and find the applicant for not building to the extent of the site plan.
And so then I take it that this site plan is detailed enough to, um, be able to do that? I don't, I don't have a bunch of background in construction planning versus aerial shots and how that kind of translate, but I'm guessing that this is detailed enough for those purposes then?
Yes, so we would hold the applicant to build to the dimensions shown on this site plan. And the statement in the ordinance is generally conforms to the site plan. So, um, we would ensure that the garage is built to generally conform to the site plan. That I think is mostly enforced by the zoning administrator. Um, but with that four-foot setback from the west property line and the dimensions shown on the site plan, those would be the two most significant factors.
And I'll also add that, uh, a building of this size requires a building permit. And that's where really the details come in. And we will not issue a, um, a building permit if it does not comply with what is approved by council. And, um, then after an item, after a building is built, then it is inspected and, um, they ensure that it is built as a permit indicated. So we have several checks and balances.
Thank you. Any other questions for the staff or the applicant? Grace?
Um, had one, sorry, just noticing, um, that the, this new garage will be larger four feet in each direction. Um, I was just wondering if there was a consideration or need with that? Okay, so anyway, that's keeping it the same level of the street, is that correct? So like that additional four feet is going into the yard in the west? Is that correct? And anyway, my question is, if it is a concern, which is not necessarily to me, but for safety or other members or whatever, is it, you know, necessary to do that? Or could it be like twenty by twenty-four, so you would get like four feet more vision off the road? Just wondering if that's a consideration or if there's a need for it to be larger?
The size of the garage is in order to make, right now with the garage that was built in the early nineteen hundreds, uh, if we have two tenants with modest-sized vehicles, there's not really room for them to open their doors in the center line. So the move from a twenty to, by twenty to a twenty-four by twenty-four is to make it easier to accommodate the passage of vehicles in the garage.
Yes, that makes sense.
The location on the Cedar Street boundary would not move. The location on the alley boundary would move to get away from the alley a few feet. The boundary on the east side would be moved four feet to the east of the current wall. And the boundary on the north side would be moved to bounce between the shift from the alley plus four foot.
Yes, although it looks like the orientation going east-west would be the length of the car, not the width of the garage. Great.
Well, it is basically, the, the, we have the same problem with headroom in both ways. When, when a normal-sized van is parked in the vehicle, there's not enough room to have the vehicle in the garage. And all, the, the other thing with the design of the garage, we'll, we'll be putting garage doors with a remote for the tenants. And right now, the vehicles stick out the end, the opening of the garage, which is why we need the extra four foot.
Thank you. And so is the east boundary that's up against the street, is that staying the same? The exact same, okay. Thank you.
The west boundary? Uh, against Cedar Street?
Yes, 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 sorry. Yeah.
That, that's not changing.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Can we get a motion?
Well, I'd like to move for approval, ordinance approving a major variance garage at two thirteen West Illinois Street, ZBA twenty twenty-one, uh, MAJ dash O two. at 213 West Illinois Street, ZBA 2021 MAJ-02. Building, I can't find my agenda now.
This would be for approval. This comes from the ZBA.
Yeah, for approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jay. Further discussion. Mary Alice?
So I just kind of wanted to let council know where I'm coming from. My opinion has not changed. I voted against this last time. My major concerns were with safety. I recognize that the applicant didn't make this garage 100 years ago. I don't think any of us were alive at the time, and I understand that. And I understand the desire to want to rebuild it. It is in bad shape. When I drove over there, it was very obvious that it needs to, something needs to happen to it. It was very obvious that it's not possible to make the entrance on the alley. You can't do a turn radius there. Really, the only solution, if you want to have a two-car garage, is to move it back and cover up some of the garden. I agree with Joanne Chester, who was the person who voted against it, which is, we have zoning ordinances for a reason. And we have opportunities to bring a property into compliance as best as possible. We've already approved the fact that we didn't ask them to change the size of the house, because the house, according to the lot size in the house, it's not appropriate for today's standards. So we didn't make that change at all. We approved the duplex use. So we've already kind of allowed some of the flexibility between what was built in the old and what is built in the new. But I still feel very strongly that even though there hasn't been damage in terms of a pedestrian getting hit, it is very easy to see how this could happen. This is a couple of blocks from Lille School. I have, personally, I have a driveway in which there's not a lot. There's about six feet that I can see, and I don't have a building around me. So I don't have a, I don't have a structure, I don't have a garage, but I have to inch out to make sure that I don't hit a pedestrian very, very slowly. And I have six feet to do that. I can't imagine trying to do that in a garage where you have walls that are blocking you. So for the two reasons, I'm still against this. One, I'm against it because I think it is, it could cause a danger. And the second reason is, is that I feel like we have given some, we have given some leeway in terms of what our existing zoning ordinance is, in terms of what is allowed. And I think that, I think that since we can't come to a resolution where we could move the garage back even further, maybe not the entire garden, but maybe half of the garden, that's where I stand right now.
Any other council comments? Chandra.
Is it, I know in the, in the report, they said mirrors aren't possible to improve vision, but could it be some sort of, I don't know, light or sign or something for, to warn pedestrians that the potential of cars backing out is there? That's something to consider. But in general, the burden of owning property, it has to be maintained in a safe way. And if this is more an aesthetic thing than this, than versus a safety thing, then the rights of the property owner should weigh more. But if it is a safety thing, then it's the opposite. So we, we have to prioritize safety over, over an aesthetic. And so if there isn't, or hasn't been, any accidents or instances, I don't see a problem with having the garage rebuilt. Most people with pedestrians, even if they're coming up to a garage, they sort of look if, if, as they would look before they got to the alley, I would think. So I would just, you know, advise you to let your tenants know that when they're parking and going in and out of the garage, to be extra cautious. And perhaps even put up a sign or something to let pedestrians or cyclists know that the potential of a car backing out is there.
Correct.
Any other council comments? Is that a hand up, James? Scratching your head. Okay. All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
No.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Harrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Um, no.
That motion passes five to two. Thank you. Next up is ordinance number, and thank you, Mr. Applethott, ordinance number 2021-06-021, an ordinance approving a sign variance at Lincoln Square, which would allow an electronic sign to change every 60 seconds. This will be a community development presentation.
Good evening, council. Thank you for hearing this case. I'm going to turn my video off because my connection here is a little unstable, and I don't want to lose you. James Webster, on behalf of New Lincoln Square LLC, requests a major variance to increase the message change frequency for two electronic message boards at 201 East Green Street in the B4 Central Business District, from one message per three minutes to one message per minute. The applicant owns the sign, as well as the Lincoln Square Shopping Center that it advertises. The sign itself is located in City Lot 10X, which is owned by the city of Urbana. Mr. Webster is here to answer council questions. Lincoln Square was built in 1964, including the two shopping center signs that were built at that time. I'll share my screen with you. Around 1995, the letter boards on the southeast and northeast sides were converted to electronic message boards. These E-boards stopped working many years ago, and the applicant would like to replace them with new E-boards inside the existing frames. So here you can see the two shopping center signs there at the southeast and east sides of the mall. And the one on the left is the one that is the subject of this variance. The sign is located at the northwest corner of East Illinois and South Line Streets, in the southeast corner of City Lot 10X. The white triangle shows where the sign is located. The site and surrounding areas are zoned B4 Central Business. The site and northwest and south surrounding areas are designated for a future land use of Central Business, and the east is zoned, designated for a future institutional use. That's the site of the city building. All other regulations would remain, including illumination standards and the prohibition on animation. This is a proposed plan submitted by American Dowell Sign Company, showing the existing sign with the existing frame cabinet. So the sign would remain the same size. It would be filled with new electronics and a new color display versus the monochrome display that was installed originally back in 95. Looking at an aerial, and the star shows where the sign is currently located. Currently, a driver would most likely see only one message as they drove by, even if they were stopped for the full 50 seconds at a red light with a turn arrow. These photos are taken approximately a block north and a block south of the sign. The yellow square boxes the area of the sign, so you can see even a block away. The sign is fairly small to a driver. If the rate was increased to one message per minute, a driver is more likely to happen to drive by during a message transition, as there would be three times as many transitions occurring as before. This means they are more likely to see two messages instead of one, but are still not likely to see three messages. Staff believe that one message per minute should not distract a driver, as long as all other E-boards regulations are followed. The staff report addresses the required variance criteria. The most important points are that this result is not the result of any situation created by the applicant. These signs were installed in 1995, the E-boards were. Second, that the shopping center itself has been an integral part of the neighborhood for over 50 years, and the signs and E-boards have been there for over 25 years. And third, that the proposed increase in message change frequency, the smaller deviation from the zoning ordinance than other options, such as increasing the E-boards' size, or brightness, or allowing animations, all options that would likely be more distracting to passing drivers. The Urbana City Council has the following options in case ZBA 2021-MAJ-04 approve the ordinance, or approve the ordinance with certain terms and conditions, or deny the ordinance. On 19th, 2021, the ZBA forwarded this case to city council with a recommendation to approve five ayes to zero nays with the following condition: that existing signs on the exterior of Lincoln Square, including the Illinois and Green Street shopping signs, be in compliance prior to installation of the replacement electronic message boards. And staff concurs with the ZBA recommendation. And that's the end of the staff report. Again, Mr. Webster is also here to answer questions.
And I'll ask if Jim Webster wants to say, make any comments at this point, and then we'll open it up for council questions. Jim, go ahead and unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, mayor. I think Mr. Ritchie presented the case fairly, a complete agreement that with the way he's depicted the request, we basically want to improve Lincoln Square. And one of the ways to do that is by getting the message out to people about what businesses are in Lincoln Square, what events are taking place, some community messaging, leasing promotion, some, some time temperature type of things as well. But we, I look at it as enhancement to Lincoln Square and to, to the merchants that are there. Also, I think it could be a public, could be benefit to public with, with the community events, getting messages out, possibly even promoting, you know, market at the square and market in the square. So there's, I think that's, that's really pretty much all I have to say. I'd be glad to answer questions if you have, have any for me.
Any questions for Jim Webster or Marcus Ritchie?
Grace. Thank you. Thanks for that information. I was wondering why the zoning ordinance is set the message to, why it's set to one message every three minutes, if that's not necessary? Because another point in this ordinance that wasn't mentioned in the verbal summary was the point, the first one in this variance criteria, that there are no special circumstances related to the sign or property, which are not generally applicable to other E-boards. So I'm just wondering if there's not a special case here, and there's no reason why it should be set at three minutes per message, and we're changing it for the Lincoln Square Mall, what if we just consider changing that zoning ordinance? Because it just seems like if there's another business, then they have to go through the same process, and we would approve that for any other business. So why, why do we have the zoning ordinance as is, then?
Which staff wants to take a stab at that one?
I will take a stab at it. I believe this ordinance was set in the 1990s. Possibly, they took it as an extra-safe measure because there wasn't enough research at the time to determine how quickly, you know, sign message changing would become distraction to drivers.
Lori, did you want to add anything to that?
That was going to be my guess as well. It was just an introduction of a new thing, and therefore, yes, let's be cautious. And a lot of years have happened since then.
And this highlights the fact that there's a whole lot about the zoning ordinance that needs to be updated, and it's on the to-do list. James, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to reinforce what Grace said. I'm going to support this going forward tonight, but it feels like we would approve this for any of these that come through. So we should look at tweaking the ordinance.
It's going to take more than a tweak. I cannot agree with you more.
I think it's an important equity piece, too, though, because there may be other businesses or organizations that aren't as inclined to navigate the whole process to go through this variance and, or go through the special ordinance and permits and all that. So I think that if this is something that is okay, and we're going to do it for the Lincoln Square Mall, I think that it is important that if we're saying there's no reason why it should be set this way, and everyone can apply and have it, I think it's important to just do it that way, because not everyone is on the same field or background for navigating the system. And it seems like also a big waste of time and energy for anyone else to have to make this application, if it's something that we know would be okay.
Any other points to make?
I might just chime in, and for second air, please. I think the industry, American Dowell's indicated that, that I think that 30 seconds is kind of commonplace in the, in champagne. Then I may be incorrect, but I think it's, I think industry-wide, it's a minute is conservative, by my understanding.
And Diana, are you saying that it's more than a tweak, because we would have to redo the entire zoning ordinance? Like, you can't pick out that one piece?
Well, what I'm saying is that we don't know yet if this is the time that they want to settle on. Typically, when you're making changes to the zoning ordinance, you, you look at all the options. So, so to make a change based on this one case really isn't good policy or practice. And yes, there's a whole lot of things that need to be updated in the zoning ordinance. It's a massive undertaking. But back in the days, we had many, many discussions when, during the time, we were considering electronic billboards, and we looked at all the research and, and, you know, the impact of the electronic signs in the city of Urbana. Ultimately, the council decided not to allow them. But, but I wouldn't, I don't think it's good policy to change the zoning ordinance based on this particular instance. It's going to take a little bit more research than that. I don't know, Lori, do you want to add, add anything to that?
Yeah, just recognition that, yes, we do put a lot of research into, into the tax amendments, so that we're not just bringing things willy-nilly. And, but this conversation can help inform that. It's just a matter of where do we fit that into the other thousands of edits that we'd like to make. There may be some that are a little more pressing that, that we're working on. Certainly, though, this is one we will add to our ever-growing list.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and definitely see those points, and agree needs to be an informed decision and not based off of one case. I also just see the confusion in this one, that we're saying that this is not a special case, this would be open for anyone to do. And then we're also saying, but it's the Lincoln Square Mall, and it's so important to our community. So it does kind of feel like we're saying there's no preferential kind of thing here. But in practice, it kind of seems like it. And again, that there might be a business or a group with an electronic sign that doesn't go through this entire process. So I see both points on that, you know, and looking for an equitable and kind of, you know, open basis of opportunity for all of our businesses and organizations.
Understood. And I know staff is very open and works with anyone who comes with an application. So, you know, they're made aware
So, you know, they're made aware of the options. And yeah, it's one of the changes that we hope to make. James?
Are we ready for a motion?
Yes, we are.
I would, I would move approval of ordinance number 2021-06-021, an ordinance approving a sign variance at Lincoln Square to allow electronic sign to change every 60 seconds.
Second. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Did we get a second? I'm sorry.
Yes, you did. Ms. Bishop.
Okay, so it was moved by James, seconded by Shandra. Okay, could you please call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colicetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is an ordinance number 2021-06-022, an ordinance ratifying emergency order number 21-01, which is reissuance of emergency order number 20-05, alcoholic liquor cocktails to go. I never thought I would be doing this a year later, but here we are and it's COVID. So if, just some background information, as you know, when the state went into the COVID shutdown back in March, the overarching authority to issue emergency orders statewide was in the governor's emergency declaration. We followed in the city of Urbana with, shortly thereafter, with an emergency declaration. And then following that, we had a number of emergency orders addressing specific issues. A lot of those orders, some of those orders dealt with masking and distancing and closures and outdoor dining. Several of them had to do with alcohol-related topics. This one was giving a certain restaurants, certain liquor license holders, the ability to sell cocktails to go. And it was part of the curbside pickup and delivery options that restaurants were given. The emergency, original emergency order expired in early June. We intend to bring to city council a proposed amendment to our liquor code to make this a permanent part of our liquor code. It's proven to be, you know, a popular practice and one that has helped keep businesses open, helped their bottom line and has proven popular with customers. There's probably one other component that we'll also be bringing for consideration to modify our liquor code. But at this point, in order to continue this service as part of the curbside delivery pickup, we need, I have signed, I've reissued the emergency order authorizing liquor license holders to do cocktails to go. And this will be in effect either until we modify the actual city liquor code or the, or I actually appeal this emergency order. But we intend to bring the proposed amendment to the liquor code to the city council shortly. And the way the overall practice for these emergency orders has gone is that the emergency orders can be issued and go into effect immediately, but then they come to city council for ratification afterwards. So this is what's coming to you for ratification. And we can get a motion in a second. I'd be happy to entertain discussion.
Oh, I have a question.
Yep.
Which entities are currently doing cocktails to go in Urbana?
It is, I'm going to ask a certain liquor license categories. As Dave, Dave Wesner is on, he drafted this one. And I'm going to ask him to weigh in on this.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Those would have been the, the certain classifications that were in the original order of 20-05, mostly driven to the restaurant tavern license holders. And I think there was also the classification for an MB classification and then the general tavern license as well.
Yeah, okay, it's the Class A licenses, which are the bars, the Class R1, which are the restaurants and the microbreweries which sell alcohol to go. And the Class RNT, which are restaurants and taverns.
Do we know which, which entities are currently doing this? I think if I remember correctly, Bunnies was doing this.
I mean, the specific, I don't, I don't have a list of the entities. I think it varied, you know, varied throughout the year, but it just gave people the option to do that.
Okay, all right.
Chris?
Have we detected over the year any increase in DUIs with the cocktail to go program?
No. It's been surprisingly, well, it's just turned out to work pretty well. It's one of those COVID-related changes that is going to be, hopefully become a permanent part of our business models. Sharice?
Is this particular ordinance, I mean, I know it's an emergency ordinance right now. And even if it becomes a permanent one, is it something that can be rescinded? Should, should we begin to see any issues regarding DUIs and so on and so forth?
Well, at this point, as an emergency order, it can be terminated either by me or the city council. If you choose to make it part of the Urbana city code, then it is not, it is no longer an emergency order. It would become a permanent part of city code, just like all the other provisions in the city code, the liquor, the liquor code. And then the, the businesses are, are then, and then we are responsible for enforcing the terms of the liquor code.
So, so I guess my, my question, my main question is that should this become, if, if it becomes a permanent part of the liquor code? And, and it also becomes a problem? Is it, can it be rescinded from the liquor code?
Sure.
After, after, okay. I just want to know that it's not something that, you know, we have to him and ha about, oh, you know, do we do it? Or is it something like, you know, just like you brought it to us tonight and suggested this? If it's something that can be rescinded just as easily?
Well, it would be amending the liquor code. It's amending that, you know, you, we will ask you to amend the liquor code to incorporate this into it, but you would, you could amend the liquor code down the line if it becomes a huge problem to remove it. But the, the one thing about the pandemic is it gave us a year and a half, it's a year and a half pilot for a lot of different things, including outdoor dining, outdoor music, use of parking lots, you know, curbana's, et cetera. So, so we've had about at least a year, well, just about a year's experience with this, with no problems.
Oh, that's good. Okay.
And I can tell you that there's been a significant increase in sales of alcohol of all sorts in all places. So it's not that people are drinking less during the pandemic.
Okay.
Grace?
Thank you. I was wondering about the issue of open containers while driving, as in what type of containers are these places serving them in? I, I do believe that there are some places that are serving them in just a, you know, a soft drink cup with a straw ready to go. And my understanding is that if someone were pulled over on their way from that establishment to home or wherever they're going, that would be an open container and not legal while driving. And so I'm wondering what are the, you know, the ways with that so that no one gets a DUI for having an open container that they legally purchased, but they couldn't legally transport? So I'm just wondering if there are regulations on the containers or how that works?
The State Liquor Control Commission has regulations on the containers and how they're supposed to be sealed.
Right. And then, Mayor, I can add to that too a little bit is that in the state statute that kind of established this, there's a lot of parameters for the idea of how this actually occurs. And I'm sure that was driven by the concern of literally just having an open container sitting next to you while you're driving. And so what you'll see when the draft changes to the liquor code come will include some of those parameters. So it's actually in our code. You don't have to go somewhere to actually look for that. And it talks about the idea of what they call tamper-evident containers. And it can't just necessarily be a plastic cup with a lid and a straw stuck into it. There's some other provisions that talk about the types of containers as well. The other thing that it accounts for is if you see them in a lot of places, it's the mixed drink or cocktail that's actually self-contained because it comes that way from the manufacturer. So they account for the ideas that if I'm a, if I'm a retail license holder that can actually do this, if I then sell to go a, I'm trying to think of a good example, a Crown and Apple and Diet already-prepared mixed drink that's almost like in a soda can container. So it's obviously prepackaged that way and sealed that way. But if I sell that to go, that's an okay container, even though I, as the license holder, didn't actually package that myself. The statute kind of accounts for that. The draft is going to account for those kinds of things too. What you'll see about this executive order is that it's prepared in the sense of, you do have to go look at the Illinois State Liquor Commission rules and kind of parameters for that. And that's just the way it's built because when it was established, that's really where you had to go look for those rules because the state was really the one trying to put those parameters in place. But I think with the recent legislature passage of another public act driven to this, it's now framing all that out to the point, we'll actually put that in the code to allow for that. But the ultimate incidence of the idea, the possibility of the sale and the, you know, driving off with it is going to be between the license holder and individual having it. They're going to have to abide by that, those parameters and restrictions, so.
So is it the, the seller's responsibility to give it in a sealed container? And is that clear and enforceable? And, you know, like giving education to businesses?
Right. I mean, they, they should be familiar with it now because the way it was structured, I think in the original Liquor Control Commission rules was structured that way. And so that is the way it will be handled. It's basically a liquor license violation, which will be enforceable by the city as such. And so it is their responsibility to follow those kind of rules currently. And then once the actual ordinance is in place to allow for that, so you just go look at the, our liquor code and you'll see it right there. You know, would be capable of being pretty well, I think, received and understood by the license holders who are able to actually do this.
And what about an individual? So say if I purchased a drink from a, you know, an establishment and it was in a to-go cup with a plastic lid that's not a, you know, counts as an official sealed container. But say I just, I don't know that. I just picked it up and I would, thought I bought it legally and then I get pulled over and then I have an open container. You know, so I'm just wondering how like, then would the establishment be responsible and the individual in a sense?
Well, I guess in that, in that example, the answer is yes. Because if the seller doesn't package it the way they're required to pursuant to the way the law works, they're held responsible. On the other side of it, the receiver of that actually is held responsible to understand how that is supposed to come to them. So they know that, you know, a plastic cup with a lid and a straw is not the appropriate way to do that. And realistically, what, at least in my position, I would hope that, you know, we as just general citizens understand the concept of, as you described earlier, the illegal transportation concept is that, I think we all know that we can't just have it open sitting next to us so we can kind of drink it as we go. Because the other kind of rules are that it's not easily accessible. And so, yeah, I can go get it to pick it up to go, but it actually has to be either placed in my trunk or it has to be placed in my rear area of my vehicle, not accessible to individuals inside the vehicle as well. So there's a lot that kind of goes with this. But I think the ultimate concept of the situation is that me as a receiver or as a, as a patron, should already be operating with the ideas that I shouldn't just have an open container sitting right next to me that I can easily just drink from.
Any other questions? Shandra?
James, Andrew.
Oh, yeah, James, diggo. I was just going to make the motion.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say that even though we haven't been able to resist talking about a future thing before the council with regard to the liquor law amendment, I, I don't think it's a, a no-brainer that we should take this for because the circumstances of the, of the pandemic are not normal operating circumstances. So I'm supportive of the temporary situation because of where, where we're at right now. But going forward, I, I would like to know more about the risk to underage drinking and maybe the, some of the DUI concerns that, that people have raised before we just assume we're going to make it part of the regular life, like liquor sales on Sunday became when the Bears were in town. You know, that was something that changed and that, and that stuck around. But I, I'm not so sure about this one because it hasn't been business as usual with, with people out and about and doing things.
Is there a motion?
I have another question before we motion. So this is for the emergency order, extending the emergency order at this point, correct?
Correct.
On, we would consider adding it as a permanent part of city code later on, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all. I'll save the rest for discussion.
Okay. Is there a motion to get this on the floor? Shandra?
I move to approve ordinance number 2021-06-022, an ordinance ratifying emergency order number 21-01, reissuance of emergency order number 20-05 alcoholic liquor cocktails to go.
Second.
Moved by Shandra, seconded by Sharice. Discussion. Grace?
Thanks. I, I would like to possibly see a little more in the ordinance for the rationale, like just reading the ordinance, all of the whereas. I was kind of looking for like the reasoning behind doing this and it just kind of seems like because we can. You know, you mentioned things about how it's been popular and it's helped businesses bottom line. And I just think that would be good to, you know, I just think everything is best when it's justified with data and demonstrated. I know that might not have that on every business, but, you know, whatever you're basing that assessment off of would be helpful to share and possibly include in there just kind of some of the reasons to why we would continue this, especially with a lot of the restrictions lifting and people can go indoors and outdoors places. I think it would just be nice to have a little more justification. And I think that we do need more education and awareness about this. Harping on this issue about containers because I'm not calling anybody out, but I've, I've seen it in Urbana businesses just serving alcoholic containers in a plastic cup like that when to go for people to drive off with. And a lot of people are assuming that this is legal practice and they might see, you know, here that you can do to-go cocktails and here's a cocktail and it's to go. And you would assume that this plastic lid that the business thinks, you know, is okay, that you would assume and trust that it is okay and it's not. And so I think it's putting a lot of individuals at risk with law enforcement and unsafe situations and also the establishment in some serious risks as well. So I think that it would be really helpful to include some of those specific things as part of maybe the ordinance itself or some awareness campaign or on the city website or whatever you use to communicate to these establishments on the conditions in terms of the liquor license and things that are changing. I think that that needs to be made very clear to the establishments and the public.
We do communicate frequently with the liquor license holders so we can communicate this information. And I would say if you see this happening, please let me or the deputy liquor commissioner, Kate Brickman, know and we could follow up with those specific establishments. Because we can't be everywhere inspecting, you know, every liquor license establishment all the time. But if you see this happening for sure, let us know, please.
Of course, yes, but I think prevention would definitely be best. And again, for the public, because I think people assume that.
Yeah, I agree.
Know that they're in such a risky, dangerous position, you know.
Well, part of prevention is knowing what's happening and then intervening in that. So if, if there are specific establishments who aren't following state statute, then, then we would appreciate knowing about that. And we can follow up. But we are in contact with the liquor license holders continuously. And this was one of the things that, again, local businesses supported and needed and wanted during the past year. So if they're not following state statute, then we will follow up on that. Mary Ellis?
I think Grace raises an interesting question. I'm wondering if there is a way to provide like a short bullet point list of do's. Do make sure that your drink is here. Do make. Do make sure that your drink is here. Do make sure that you, you know, and, and give it to the, to the um, people who are, who are providing these drinks to go. And say, can you know, post this in your restaurant or put it with, you know, with your bag when you, when they come and pick it up. But I, I do, I, I, I hear what Grace is saying, which is basically, we don't want to put people at risk because I think they're doing something legal. And then they get pulled over and just to discover that they aren't doing something legal. Um, so providing them of what they're allowed to do, I think might be helpful that in terms of an education.
We can do that. Any other discussion? Uh, will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
Ms. Hershey.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. And we'll follow up with our liquor license holders on that. Um, next item is J four, that will be delayed until June twenty-eight. Um, number five is board and commission reappointments. I will say that um, my assistant Kate Levy, who was going to help provide. Um, specific information about individual appointees has been stuck in an airport most of the day trying to get back from the east coast. So written um, information about each, the appointees is not here, but I will say in general for these reappointments. They are people who are, have, are currently serving on the boards or commissions and who have indicated they would like to continue. I know last week or the week before council members expressed concern or the desire to have people reapply. When their term is over and that's certainly something we can, we can try for next year as in changing the process. But at this point, we had already reached out to council, to uh, board and commission members. Um, before we heard from the council feedback. The terms end on different dates, each board and commission, and we did link to the individual board and commission. So you'd have an opportunity to see what the requirements are for membership on each of those things. They have different um, terms. For example, the building safety code board of appeals, these are five-year terms, which are long. That's a long time, but that's what it is. Um, most of the commissions have three years. The Sustainability Advisory Commission for the youth representative ends at an odd time because that's when Maddie turns eighteen. So um, SAC is one of the commissions that has a seat for a person under the age of eighteen. And she's, Maddie has been a great uh, member for several years and unfortunately she'll, she'll age out in February. But she expressed the desire to continue serving until then. Um, I know the B-PAC is also thinking, actually has, is going to do a youth position as well. But we don't have a, an applicant for that yet. Um, that said, these are um, also I want to make sure the public knows these are voluntary positions. They're unpaid. We depend upon the willingness of the residents to serve the community. And we are very grateful for the service of these folks who have uh, served for various numbers of years and have been willing to, to re-up. And um. Just in general or just as an overview, there are approximately, we never can get quite an exact count, but about a hundred thirty to a hundred forty seats. Voluntary positions on all these boards and commissions that we need to keep filled every single year. So, so just finding the volunteers and the applicants to serve on these boards and commissions. It requires a great deal of time. Typically, we'll advertise or get the word out in various ways. Many times I'll turn to the staff members supporting the boards and commissions for recommendations. We're always trying to diversify the membership on the boards and commissions. Some of these commissions, when we started looking at them. We found that most of the members came from one particular geographic area of town and we're trying to diversify um, that. We did that with the plan commission, the last appointment to the plan commission. Um, we did um, point. The uh, the, the appointee came from North Urbana, which was great, different perspective, different neighborhood. The, some of the commissions, um, there are no specific qualifications listed for these boards and commissions. Typically, people who apply are doing so because they're interested. Some of them have very specialized expertise. And some of them are just residents who have an interest in the topic. Some of these boards and commissions require more training than others. But the basic qualification is willingness to serve and um. And the reliability for people to show up every month or every other month or, you know, make it to all the meetings and, and put in the time and work required. City staff are here who do support these commissions or at least most of them. And they may be able to give you particular information about each of these individuals if you're, if, if you're interested or if you want to know more. Um, but again, most of the time, people who, who volunteer for specific boards and commissions do so out of a specific interest. In, in that area. So I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Uh, I have comments, questions?
Sure. But we need to get it on the floor. Let's get a motion on the floor.
I will move to get on the floor. Is it just J five or do I have a whole number here?
The board and commission appointments.
Okay, board and commission appointments.
Reappointments, actually.
Okay, yeah.
Second.
I'm not going to change that too.
These are board and commission reappointments. Okay, so it's moved by Grace, seconded by Sharice. Further discussion.
I was just gonna say, I like the idea of people reapplying um, in, consider new applicants and just reconsider. Evaluate, kind of reflect on um, the person's previous service. Um, I appreciate that it's a volunteer position and appreciate people's time and don't mean to have like extra hurdles and scrutiny on them. Uh, but I think it's not that much to ask to do that very, it's a very short application for a lot of the commissions. Every three to five years um, to reapply, I think is not that much to ask. Um, and I think it helps avoid the problems where in my experience, it's not good to base these decisions on who's already there. Or who's been doing it and says they want to stay. Um, just in other organizations I've been in, that can make it really kind of stagnant. Um, and so I do think that it's good to be a little more intentional about that. Um, and I would also like to better utilize these commissions. I think it would be great to have more interaction with the city. Obviously don't know all the commissions and all the interactions. Um, but just from my experience, I have seen. Um, not as much interaction as there could be with the commissions and the city. And especially if we have these people volunteering their time as experts or people who are interested in the topics. Um, it makes sense to utilize their efforts a little more.
I couldn't agree more. And one of the ways I would like to utilize some of these boards and commissions is as you and we as the city consider. The um, infrastructure, the neighborhood-based infrastructure grants, I think B-PAC can be extremely valuable in helping. Us identify areas in certain neighborhoods that are um, underserved in terms of sidewalks and street lighting and connectivity. And all of these things contribute to bicycle and pedestrian safety. So they've been studying this for years. They're very familiar with the entire city. Especially and, and the areas for safe routes to schools and the areas around schools, which I think is a real high priority area as well. So that's one place I see boards and commissions. The also, we are about to um. Start planning a number of facilities, replacing facilities. And I think we can incorporate many aspects of sustain, we need to incorporate and be, you know. Aspects of sustainability into our new buildings can serve as a model for that. So I would expect the Sustainability and Advisory Commission could help us, can help us in that way. Tree commission is another one. Um, we, as you know, we just got the um, the very, very generous gift. For tree planting in underserved areas of the community and we also have the um, follow-up from the Lumpkin grant. So, so there, there probably will be uh, additional opportunities for the tree commission to provide input. And several, several members of the tree commission are actually extremely knowledgeable in, in, in this area. So I agree, we can, we can utilize our boards and commissions. James.
Yeah, I would, I would encourage everybody on council that you are um, some of our best advocates for finding people in the community. That might have interest or alignment with, with these opportunities. Um, uh, if you have people in your ward or in your social circles, circles in Urbana. And you're aware that they have interest in these areas, encourage them to, to join us in helping make the city move forward.
And usually we try to send out the uh, what, we will have lists of openings that we will send out shortly. Which I would hope you can all help recruit. People that you know of to serve on these commissions, but we generally don't know until we, well, actually Kate knows. She's contacted everybody. Um, this is, this isn't the completely list. There's another set uh, that will bring. Um, either next week or the following week, the following, the other reappointments. But then we'll know where the vacancies are, what we need to fill, and there are always vacancies. I can assure you of that. It's, it's, it's constant. So um, I will.
That's what I was gonna say too. It's like, there are plenty, plenty of vacancies for people that really want or are interested. It's not just a matter of um, people volunteering. It's a matter of, of people wanting to, to, to give of their time and their, and their service or their expertise. And they're not being um, I, I believe on practically every. Every commission and board and whatever, there's at least one vacancy. Um, if, if not more. And that, that's what I've noticed when I, when I have even been able to look at the. The board out front. As a matter of fact, some, that needs to be updated too. But because i- it, it's about, you know, when, if people want to do that, if they, if they. I don't have a problem with reappointing someone that wants to do something and to serve their city. Now, that's just my comment.
Would say there is room at the table for sure.
Always room. There's always somebody there. That's what I've noticed.
Yes, absolutely agree. Um, another point too, I do think that the chairs should maybe be evaluated differently then. Because that is um, you know, something that is filled and is one person. And it seems like our chairs on a lot of these commissions are really longstanding and don't think there's any term limits. And so I think that would be a good one to reconsider um, under the same rationale that if we have some of these management positions as appointment for staff. I feel like the chair is kind of, you know, that management position. Um, and I think would be good to consider because that's not one that, you know, anyone can just come and fill.
And in answer to that, uh, being on the library board, we pick our own leadership. We don't, um, so I don't know what they do on other commissions and boards, but on our, on our library board. We, we choose, the council doesn't choose who chairs a commission or as far as I know. Um, the, uh, it is the whoever's serving on those commissions and boards, my understanding. Let me qualify that, is that, that who, that's who, that's who does the, the choosing of the, the chair?
And then they make a recommendation to the mayor for appointments?
Yeah, well, they, they can make a recommendation or uh, my understanding, they can make a recommendation or they can just be reappointed. After they're reappointed, if, if the, if that commission wants a different leadership or chooses different leadership, then that's what they do.
Say that's not. It's from ver, it's varied from one board to the next.
Yeah, let, let's be clear, the, the library board is a special case.
Yes.
Because it has statutory governance and it gets to elect its chair from the board members. I, I don't know what that is like for some of these.
That's why I qualified it by saying, I don't know what happens on other commissions and boards. I just know what happens with mine.
Most of the boards and commissions have bylaws of some sort and, and we depend on the board and. The uh, accompanying staff to follow the bylaws, so.
But is a mayor, right? So um, if they have input, they will pass that along?
I'm sorry, part of, part of what you said uh, blanked out. Can you repeat it?
Sure, I say, because it's ultimately all mayoral appointment with council approval, right? So even if a commission votes amongst themselves and we say we want this person to be the chair. Um, you don't really power directly, right? Then they make a recommendation and then you could appoint someone or reappoint someone.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, and I would say that on um, it, at least some of them, that there's no discussion on chair. It's just kind of um, an external process with no input whatsoever.
Yeah, that, that's something I would like clarity on. Are people appointed to the board? And they're currently chair or they appointed to the board as chair?
Well, as you say, one of the appointments, yeah, one of the appointments tonight is Stacy Gloss. She's currently serving as chair. And this would be an appointment as chair. For the SAC. Sustainability Advisory Commission.
Yeah, and, and so uh, it, it'd be, I, I think we all need to have some education on how the various. Uh, boards and commissions do that because I. It, is it always that way? Uh, because I, I thought in some of the other, not library, but some of the other. Um, I, I, I was thinking in terms of maybe it was the cable commission. They, they select the chair from the people who have been appointed to it, not, it's not the mayor that says.
Well, again, it, it, it could be what the bylaws say. And this is, this, this boards and commissions again, were, are one of these things that um, have been created. Over the years and um, with not much consistency sometimes in the bylaws or the practices or the policies. Some meet monthly, some meet quarterly. Um, it, it's, you know. There, there have not been as much consistency as perhaps you'd like to see now. But we manage to keep them mostly filled and functioning. And it serves as a very good way for the city to get feedback from the community and for the community to have input into, into what we do. And I can tell you, I know you don't want to compare Urbana, but I will compare Urbana to many other communities. Because I was, I've been on a lot of Zoom calls with a lot of mayors over the past year. And um, Urbana has more boards and commission seats per capita than just about any other city I've encountered. So we, we do get a great deal more input from our citizens than most other, than many other municipalities. Um, that, at least that I've interacted with over the past year, which is a good thing, you know, it's a good thing. We have a very engaged um, community.
Well, I guess what I'm driving at is it would be helpful, one of the things we should work towards is understanding the distinction of. Someone who's being reappointed who is currently the chair. Which has a different implication of uh, the mayor appointing a person as the chair.
We, I would welcome council assistance in. Clarifying a lot of this and updating this whole structure. So if folks are really interested in, in this, then I see, um, I see a role for you in the future. On helping us come up with a um, more consistent. Um, approach to this whole thing.
I think you have some interested parties in that.
Sounds like it, okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments? Are you ready to vote? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, I had a question.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. There's one that I need to abstain from. Do I just indicate that when I vote, since they're all lumped together?
Um, yes, which one is that?
Uh, for Pete Resnick.
Okay.
It's due to a conflict of interest.
Um, well then we'll just go down and let's just take these individually then. Well, no, that's a lot.
Can we just split off the uh, Pete Resnick and the rest of them?
From the rest of them?
Let's split off HRC and we'll take.
All right, everybody.
Okay, so just for the record, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission is Jeff Marino, Sartankh Prasad, Nancy Westcott, Building Safety Code Board of Appeals, David Crowe, Brad House, Sustainability Advisory Commission, Stacy Gloss Chair, Sustainability Advisory Commission, this would be the youth representative, Maddie Garbach, and then the Urbana Tree Commission, Stuart Berlacher, W L Jackson Bird, Bridget McGill, Michael Stevenson. We'll take that group first.
Do you need a motion to separate?
Yeah, we need to amend that original motion to exclude the HRC. So Grace, do you want to amend your original motion?
Yes, I amend my motion for board and commission reappointments excluding the Human Relations Commission.
Sharice, do you agree to that?
I second it.
Okay, all right, let's, the clerk please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. And then we'll entertain a motion for the Human Relations Commission appointment for Pete Resnick.
I'm of approval for the Human Relations Commission term ending June 30th, 2024, for Pete Resnick.
I'll second.
So moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
I abstain due to a conflict of interest.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay. That covers the business on the agenda. The last item is a discussion item, following up on questions raised about the budget and the capital improvement plan. And I think leading this discussion would be Carol Mitten.
So this is really just a placeholder item. We had, we had received a bunch of questions, written questions that we have, that Elizabeth compiled the answers and, and supplied to you. We have all the department heads here, we wanted to give you another opportunity. I had put in a call for any additional follow up questions that you had last week. We didn't get any, but here's your opportunity to ask any questions about the CIP or the budget with all the folks here, if you have any.
We'll make a note that the questions were, should be in your packet, the written answers to the questions that you submitted. And then there was a request for personnel summary as far as the number of people in various departments in public works, related to public works specifically. So the number of positions in public works for fiscal year 2021 and proposed for FY22. So that was provided in response to a question as well.
Mayor, I think Elizabeth wants to say something.
Sorry, Elizabeth.
I was just gonna say that was all emailed on Friday, it was not in the packet, it was sent by email.
Oh, sorry, okay. Any comments, questions, follow up, Mary Alice?
Yeah, um, I had a question, I know that, I think it was Jay who asked the question about public works and the urban forests. And it looked to me like we are decreasing in staff there. And I'm wondering if that's due to retirement, is that due to us not filling a position? I was, I was kind of surprised to see that we were reducing staff on that.
So can you be more specific? Like, at what point in time do you think it looks like we're reducing staff? And is that based on salaries, budget, or on FTEs?
Both.
Okay, I'll, I can take another look. Probably better if I do it and get back.
It looks like we've reduced the FTE by like point five?
Yeah, there, there was some, there was some minor shuffling around of positions within public work. So I, I don't think in the end we actually reduced the resources for that, but let, let me follow up.
Okay, and then I, I was confused a bit about legal staff. And, and, and I know that there's been some fluctuation over the past year. So the reason I was confused is because I know that, is he still here? Dave is under contract, is that right? Is Dave still under contract?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so Dave's still under contract and, okay, I took notes in terms of what pages this was all on and now I've lost my notes. But it seemed to me like the salaries that we had for legal as well as the contracted services seems to have gone up. And so that's what I'm trying to find right now. Resources. So perhaps you can give me an overview of, of who do we have staffing legal right now?
We have an administrative assistant in legal, we have a paralegal in legal.
Who also serves as the FOIA officer.
Yes. And then we have Dave Westner under contract. We know that we need additional help in legal and we're exploring whether that's going to be another paralegal, an assistant city attorney. And then we have, we have Michelle Brooks, but she's actually in HR finance, but she's, she's sort of dotted lines of the legal department.
Who is an attorney as well, if you haven't met her?
Yeah, no, no, I've met her. So I'm, I'm just looking at the proposed budget for this, under salary for legal is $327,000. What we spent in the previous two fiscal years is about $400,000. So I'm assuming that that takes out the city lawyer position and then puts it in the contracted. Is that correct or is that incorrect? And the contractual services, we have legal services for $35,000. So is that the contract that we have for Dave?
No, um. I'm gonna have to rely on Elizabeth to help me with this one.
Yeah, and I, I mean, there, there's a lot of details behind all of these numbers. So I'm, I believe we budgeted for full staffing, right? Based, based on the positions described in the back end of the budget book, where we detail on the budgeted positions. But if we don't, likely we won't fill the city attorney position immediately. And so if that's the case, then we'll need to amend the budget to move money from salaries into services.
Okay, so at the moment we are budgeting, assuming that we have a city attorney? And that is at salary?
We do have a city attorney.
I know, but it's in salaries right now.
You mean it's on staff?
Okay.
Right, yeah, we're budgeting based on the staffing that's described in, on page 213 in the budget book. So that page on the back of the book that has all the budgeted positions.
The two things that we're uncertain of right now is whether or not we're gonna hire a full time city attorney and if we're gonna hire another, you said a paralegal? Are those the two uncertain positions in legal right now?
The, I, I think for the moment, we, we are not gonna be hiring a city attorney, although that's a relatively recent development. Because we're satisfied with the, with the, the, the setup that we have now with Dave Westner and we have a lot of other recruiting to do. And so that's, we're, that's gonna be the status quo. The, the question for us is whether or not, as you see in the, that chart that, that Elizabeth referred to on page 213, we have a paralegal who's, actually, he's not quite full time yet, but we want him, we want to move him up to full time. And then we, that would leave a half time paralegal and a half time assistant city attorney. And we're, and we're evaluating whether or not we want to have a half time beach or we want to have a full time assistant city attorney, want to have a full time, another full time paralegal. So we have, we have those, those slots and we have to figure out exactly how we wanna, how we want to fill those.
Okay, all right, I'll let others go. Because I'm sure there's other questions. Shandra?
Um, I'm, I'm really interested in the, the VERF and getting some more explanation around that. For example, like the cars, why, why is it three years? What is the rationale behind the three years? Why is it years and not mileage? Cars are very expensive right now. Do they need to be purchased for next year? If, and you're, what you budgeted for 22, does that take into the account how the price for new cars have increased?
So we, we always assume there are gonna be some price increases. I don't think anybody expected the kind of price increases we're seeing right now. And I'm hopeful that eventually that'll, that'll probably come back down. So, so there are a whole bunch of questions in there. So I can, so a couple of years ago, we discussed with council the, the whole VERF funding policy. So I can provide all of you that memo that kind of goes through how that, how that works, how we, how we fund the VERF with, with respect to the life cycle. It's different for different vehicles. So when you're looking at squad cars, those are three years because they get used, you know, sometimes maybe 24 hours a day, kind of constant wear and tear. But there are many other passenger vehicles where they might have, for example, a, a 10 year life. So, but, but they're, so the squad cars all get replaced on the same schedule. And, and so they're all, they're all done kind of in one fell swoop. But some others, some others would be different and would be kind of evaluated individually. So we don't, as a, as a practice, I don't think we're replacing things that don't need to be replaced. We have pretty long life cycles already generally. I don't know if Bryant wants to add something to that, if he's still on?
Good evening, yeah, I don't have a lot to add. I will say that with regards to Mark's squad cars, they do run 24/7, 365 or close to that. And we've, we've tried to stretch them out to four years and that ended up not being a good plan. We had water pumps going out and just the, the certain things, seat adjustment handles were breaking off. So the, the sweet spot seems to be about three. When I started, it was two years. So we've, we have been able to settle on three as being good for the marked units.
Okay, I, I understand that. So in respect to the high prices right now, is your estimate close to that? Or will we expect to see, you know, this portion of the budget, you know, have to take up more because the prices are higher?
Yeah, it's, it's possible, I think. At this point, we don't really know how long this is gonna last, you know? So, so some vehicles, you know, we may be able to just wait, right? And see if the price drops back down, some we may not. If we do have to increase, if we do find it necessary to increase the budget, you'll know because we'll have to come back to council to amend the budget and we'll have a chance to talk about it then.
Okay, thank you.
You said you replace them all on that three year cycle though, right? So I was confused about the holding offer, do you mean with different departments, different types of vehicle?
Well, specifically the squad cars, they're, they're all generally replaced on the same cycle. But everything else on the fleet has different cycles and it's not necessarily done that way.
So, so I have one more question. Um, it says equipment for squads is a six year life. And if you're replacing the cars every three years, I'm assuming that the equipment moves to the new car and not every car gets equipment. You know where I'm going with that?
Yes, I do. Typically, we, we try to use the equipment and keep it as long as it'll fit and be applicable inside the new cars. Occasionally, for instance, Ford made a redesign, separate distinct even from maybe this temporary supply chain issue we're having. And so when they made a redesign, all of a sudden we had to get different, any, different equipment to go in, excuse me, inside the vehicles. But ye- yes, we try to, various mounts and, and other things we try to carry on from one car to the next.
So how come it says equipment for squads in a quantity of one if you're replacing twelve cars? I, I guess sort of explain that, that cycle for me? Because if they're, if they're transferring from an O to the new car, why is it only a quantity of one?
Shandra, would you, would you, would you mind giving me the page number that we're talking about exactly? Thank you.
Two twenty-three.
I'm gonna let Bryant look at that, but I think the answer is they're kind of all lumped together, right? It's one item on the VERF schedule, but I think that's equipment for probably all of the squad cars.
Okay.
And Bryant will tell me if I'm wrong.
No, I'm not going to tell you wrong, I believe that's correct. I think that's a, as I like to say, an artifact of some of the budgeting process here, how it shows up.
Okay, thank you.
Before we get to the next question, we are approaching 10:30, which is the time for adjournment unless council votes to extend. So what's your pleasure?
I'll move that we extend the meeting to 11:00.
Yeah. Who was the second?
Grace.
Okay, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Grace. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passed, okay, go ahead Grace.
Oh, where was I going? Um, as far as one of the questions on there that we're talking about with the budget, with the extra $35,000 for police de-escalation training, as I said before, I'm not really a fan of more money for training. But I think if we are going to include this, I would like to see it done by more of a community based organization and not a police based organization. I saw that you were looking at professional law enforcement training out of Plano, Texas, and they look like a decent organization, but they're still part of the policing system. And we have had lots of training with the U of I Institute and other police institutes here. And so I would like to see us try something different and go through a different kind of training approach with an organization that's not police based.
If you had any specific suggestions and could share those, we'll, we'll take them under advisement.
Sure. Mary Alice?
Nobody's gonna ask, I'll ask another question. So Elizabeth, under human resources on page 68, there's contractual services and it says other professional services, which is the third one down. Is that the compensation program? It's $150,000 roughly.
Okay, if, if you flip over one page, wait. Are you looking at page 68?
I'm looking at page 68, yep, under contractual services, the third item, which is other professional services. Did I do that right? Yeah, other professional services is $150,000 roughly, $148.
Mm-hmm. Let me, just give me a minute here. It's probably something I should know off the top of my head, but I'm tired.
You can follow up an email, that's fine. I, it was just a glaring number.
Yeah.
You do, I, I, well, Elizabeth's looking, you do bring up a point I'm not sure everyone knows is we are in, in the process of doing, were we not? We're, we've hired people to do it. Citywide classification and compensation study.
Um, just to be clear, it's for non-union employees.
For non, yeah. Yeah, for not, sorry, for non-union employees. So long overdue, look at, you know, how our wage and salary structure compares to our peers.
Ah, okay. Yeah, let me, let me, there, there are several things on that line, Adam. So let me, let me do that in email response.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then another question I had is the, for public works for Tim's position, is that a contracted position? Or is that a regular salary position?
It's currently contracted, but I'm guessing it's budgeted as a salary position.
Okay, all right. That's what I was trying to figure out. So is the general practice for things that are currently under contract to keep them in salary?
So I, so I think at the time we were putting together a budget, we didn't necessarily know what was going to happen, right? If we would fill that spot with an employee or not. So normally we would budget the salaries. But if we have to adjust, we will.
Okay. It's just hard sometimes to compare salaries and contracts to figure out where we stand in, in the grand scheme of things.
Jay? Yes, I, I have a general question. There are a few items that are kind of falling under the, the category of addressing systemic racism. And I think that there are some concerns about how that's being met. I guess, what clarification do you need? Do you need like explicit, I will not support a budget with this in this at this point? Is that what you're looking for?
We're, we're actually not looking for people to take positions. We're looking for people to ask questions.
Okay.
Right now, I mean, i- if you, we'd take your feedback.
Well, I can provide an example of that is I raised a question about the co-responder model that's being put forward and talking about diverting the time of an officer to, to support that program. That's not a program that has come before council. I have a lot of concerns with the model that's being proposed, but it's just being pushed forward as part of this budget. And I'm, I'm curious about how that's being framed and what, what is the, the best mechanism to say, like, that does not feel like an appropriate thing to put in this budget when it's not something that's been approved by the council?
Well, if it's, if, if it's not in the budget, I, I think it's important to have a placeholder in the budget. And I believe that this approach is a reasonable place to start. And this is the budget being proposed. And this is why I'm proposing it in the budget. I think this is the reasonable place to start.
If I could just, if I could just add something to, to the mayor's point about placeholder. You know, we, we've taken a lot of feedback from the public and, and as you've probably can perceive from our budget, we don't have a lot of extra money to put towards different things. So, and, and we're, we're feeling our way on some of this stuff. So to the extent that you don't support a given approach, it, it's, it's really useful if you could offer something else. Because we're trying to respond to what we hear. We're responding with, with the best thing that we have been able to discover. If you're aware of something that is different, more effective, worthy of consideration, we'd love to hear it, what, whatever that might be. So it, it's, it's as useful for us to know what your position is. But if you have something alternative to offer, that's really useful.
All right, I'm more than happy to do that legwork, but I, I, part of the point is a point of clarification. If we're saying it's a placeholder, right? So saying there's X amount of money that's being devoted to an alternative response for mental health crisis, right? Like that's, that's the idea. But that's not what's in the budget. It's saying that this money is being used with this express purpose of, of using that staff time towards this program.
Right, so, yeah, that is the intent. That is the intent. When I use the word placeholder, it's in the, the, in relation to the fact we don't know. It's, all the details have not been worked out. We don't know the exact cost, but I do know that I wish to reallocate one FTE from the police department to this program. And that would also combine a social worker from Rose Trans as a co-responder model, so.
I'm, I'm aware of the program. I, I'm, I'm aware of the program.
Okay.
That's, that's not the issue. My, my issue is with the program. I don't think it's an effective model for the, 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 what we're being asked for of the community. And so saying that that's going to be the solution. And I, like I said, I'm more than happy to do that legwork, but I also want to be cognizant of the fact that we need to pass the budget by June, or the end of the June. So if we're saying we're going to put a placeholder, we're going to create that flexibility to say, we acknowledge that there's a need to address this concern and being really clear about what concern we are addressing. I don't have a problem with that, but if we're saying that this is the model we are going to use, I think that, that it's important to create that separation and clarification, right? Of what are you asking us to approve? Are you asking us to approve a budget and therefore approve this model? Because I think that's a problematic way of putting that into a budget rather than bringing that to council and asking us to approve that model.
Well, at this point, we, you know, obviously nothing is going to happen until we get more of the details worked out. And it will come before council. So, so having it in the budget is a declaration of our intention. And then, you know, I, you know, we'll see where the discussion goes. But you really don't have anything much to react to at this point. We just don't have the details yet. And that's, that's, that's clear. But that's coming, so.
I guess I, I will just kind of conclude that thought by saying, I, I appreciate there was a lot of responses to the questions that I've raised, many of them around this kind of related issue of, of addressing racism, addressing, addressing concerns about policing that have been brought up. And I will definitely work on synthesizing my thoughts more, more clearly in response to this. But I, I do want to be mindful of the fact that this is, this is time-sensitive. So any of that clarification of exactly what are you asking from us, I think is really important for us to get quickly.
Well, and, and, and part of that could be if there are additional, I, I mean, w- we don't know details like the mayor said. But if there will be, for instance, if there would be an intergovernmental agreement that would be necessary, that would come before you. So we could, we could at least give some thought to what other opportunities might you have to influence the, this decision-making. And I don't know at the moment what, what those might be, but we can think, give some thought to that and, and try to, try to communicate that.
Uh, Mary Alice?
Yeah, like, I think, Jay, what I'm hearing you say is that it, it's difficult that we're tying the budget to a new program. And without having the details of what that program is. And at least based on what I've heard from the chief and from the mayor and, and previously from Lieutenant Saunders is that whatever we do is going to be in conjunction with another entity outside of the city. And whenever we have some relationship outside of the city, we have to, the city council has to sign off on an intergovernmental agreement, which is what Carol is talking about. So I, I'm not really, I don't have a good solution right now on how to disentangle the budget conversation from the service conversation. But I can say that any solution that we have that is outside of the city will have to come before city council, if that makes sense.
It does, and I, I respect that. I understand that process, but I think that that's why it's a problem that it's worded the way it is in the budget, right?
Yeah, I, I hear you. Yeah, yeah.
With council involvement, it shouldn't just be said like, this is what's happening.
Right, right.
That's how it's currently framed in the budget.
Uh, Grace?
Thanks, um, I agree, and I think that we could just make it more vague so that it is appropriate. You know, if you don't have this particular co-responder model in mind, because it is new and it hasn't really been shared or approved that widely. Why can't we just make it a more general thing? Like an item for alternative or complementary, you know, community safety, mental health, emergency response thing. It does seem like it's jumping the gun to lock us into this specific thing when we know it will likely not be that specific thing. I think it makes sense, just call it like it is. And if it's a placeholder for something we haven't developed yet, then why don't we call it the placeholder for something that we haven't developed yet? In, you know, better language.
Charisse?
I, I guess, I'm, I'm looking at this like, like this way. It, I, I get what you're saying, Diane, as far as how, yes, it's a placeholder. We don't have all, all of the, the bumps or outline or, you know, rubrics put together. However, it seems like it's something that at the very least, you want to have some kind of budget for it so that you know what you're working with from the beginning. You know, we, we have this much money to work with to try to get this going. And we can always build up on it later. But if you don't have that money designated and you're saying it's, it is for, you know, trying to, to build this program, then we don't know where we, where we can start from budget-wise. Because that money will get used in something else. So you set it, you set it aside for saying that it's that. I think that, that's what I'm getting from this. Is that you said it as, you put it as a set aside. You know, it's like, it's like saving for your rent. You know, you put your money for your rent now and you, you get your money for your, your, your light bill and your car payment and your insurance. If you, you mix everything else, if you mix it up in everything else, even saying that it's just general, then it's liable to get spent on something else. That's, that's how I, uh,
I think we can, I think we can come up with a different way to phrase this in the budget that gives us some flexibility looking forward.
Okay.
But you're right, we need to, we need to make sure the funding is there. The resources are there to fund this alternative response, this complementary response, this reallocation of some resources that take into account the needs of the community.
Grace?
So he's got, um, kid, I'd also like maybe a rundown of like when and how our input is wanted. Like, it sounds like you want emails with specific stuff and that's helpful. And I'm wondering also if there's another discussion before we have to approve this.
Well, the budget ordinance comes to committee of the whole next week. So there's another opportunity for discussion then. And if you have questions that you, if you can send your questions in advance, if they're going to require research or data gathering or even just clarification, the earlier we can get them, the better. But there will be an opportunity for discussion next week. That's when the committee of the whole will discover, will consider the budget ordinance.
Shandra?
Um, so two things. First, the, the 3% local cannabis tax. It's, so it's in, and this is sort of related to the question that was in the document. Knowing now what we know, did that tax, that 3% tax is going into the general operating fund. Are we able to know or ascertain exactly where that 3% is going? Or is it just kind of thrown in this pot and just used? Because it seems that the general fund, I mean, is used to fund fire, police, public works, et cetera. If those departments were already funded before this 3%, couldn't that 3% be going somewhere else? That's where it's needed more? And even, I mean, we found out last, last week that public works is like super underfunded. So could it just be, does that 3% designated only for public works things?
So, so I'm going to answer that a couple ways. So part of it is the nature of the general fund, right? We, it's kind of where things go that don't have a dedicated revenue source. And we don't earmark specific revenue sources to specific expenses in the general fund. It would be, I, I feel like I, I, I think I missed part of that. What was the other part of the question?
So if the, um, if we could use that tax toward something else, maybe something in equity or restorative justice? Or if like we learned that public works was severely underfunded, can that 3% go strictly to, you know, sidewalk justice or whatever?
So, so I know you guys have heard this before about closing the two, two and a half million dollar structural budget gap. So that 3% cannabis tax was actually part of the plan to close the structural budget gap. So when the cannabis tax was approved by the last city council, that revenue was, was needed to just get us to a balanced budget. Without that, we, we probably would have been cutting a couple of positions in addition to what we already cut.
I see, okay. No, go ahead.
So I was going to say, you know, so revenues grow over time. We're kind of hopeful as, as, as we move out of the pandemic, revenues are going to start to grow again. And then we, we would, I would love, I mean, ever since I've been here, we've been talking about cutting and trying to find new revenues and plug holes. I'm waiting for the year where we can talk about like, what are the great new things that we want to do? And I hope it's coming soon.
Yeah, for sure. And my second question was around the, the date of approving the budget. You said June, June 30th, we have to approve it, correct? But I think in, in the municipal budget law, that you can even go and just do it within that first quarter of the fiscal year. Is that something that could be considered? If we still are answering questions and, or does that throw the whole thing off?
No, we, we can't do that legally. We have to adopt a budget before the start of the new fiscal year for municipalities. I know that some other governments can do that, school districts can do that. I think townships can do that, but we can't.
Okay.
It's, 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 it's state law. Now, last year, the governor proved, approved an exception, right? Because of the pandemic. We talked about that and I did not recommend taking advantage of that even then. Because essentially you start the year without, what you have to do is you have to apply the last year's, sorry, last year's budget as the budgetary control. And so we would literally be sitting here with capital projects that couldn't begin because there was no budget. And it would kind of be a, it would be a mess.
Okay, I understand that, just was curious, thank you.
Any other questions? James? You're muted, James.
If, if we're going to revisit the language around the complimentary response and relative to Jay's questions, I would prefer that that be have dollars associated with it rather than just being listed as an FTE. To clarify what an FTE approximately means. I assume that's an FTE that's being moved that maybe not be filled now and might be something we hire from an existing opening or something. But there should be, there should be some, I would maybe in addition to it being an FTE, have an idea of what kind of dollar amount that, that would be.
I think it, I think it does indicate it, doesn't Elizabeth?
I, I mean, I, I think it would help if we, if we kind of take a step back. So what happened last year in the budget process is the council directed us to eliminate one police officer position and, and set aside funding for one door or, or some similar kind of program to be determined. We put that in the, in the police admin budget in a contractual services line. So there's no FTE budgeted for the program. There's, and there's really been no change. We carried that over into this year's budget, but it is still kind of a placeholder. And if we were going to add a position, I, we, and we were going to move that money into a And if we were going to add a position, I, we, and we were going to move that money into a salary line. That would, because of the way our city code is written, that would require a council action. Because we can't move, we can't move money between personnel line, line items and other types of line items, line items without a council action. We can move them among different personnel line items, but we couldn't make that change without a council action.
So, but what I'm reading on page Roman numeral four. Is that it talks about one FTE patrol office position will be reassigned. To, to the proposed co-responder crisis response team. There's no dollar amount as to what that is, it's talking in terms of a FTE and not in terms of. Yeah, I, I, I'm not disputing that it got moved into a contractual service space, but it, it's still being talked about as an FTE.
That's my, that's my fault.
Not as the dollars.
So we, we still, yeah, that's another piece of it entirely, sorry.
We may think of it in terms as a, as a person resource, but I, I would like to know what that's approximately going to be with dollars.
Okay. Jay? I have one other thing that I know there's been a lot of back and forth about support for B-PAC in terms of staff time. And just got another email talking about, yes, there's someone who's taking minutes, but that many of the other commissions have. Staff with dedicated time to put towards that commission, but that B-PAC doesn't, can I get clarification on that?
There are two staff people who support B-PAC, one's a technical person who actually serves on B-PAC and that's Shannon Baranek. And then there's an admin who takes minutes and handles the more administrative side of things. I think at one point in time, the person who is Shannon's equivalent had more time to spend on B-PAC than Shannon has right now. And so you, there's some staffing challenges on the engineering side of public works. And, you know, sometimes when we're not fully staffed, things. You know, don't get done, that's what happens when you don't have enough, enough hands to do the work. So I understand that B-PAC wants more support than they have right now. But, you know, that's one of the reasons why. We want them to take the lead on this equity and quality of life projects. Because then, you know, those are projects, once we get them scoped, we can contract them out to do the design work and so forth. It, it, it really needs to be, it, it can't be, it can't be somebody. The role of B-PAC is not to task our staff with work. In terms of, here's a project we want you to do, or here's something we want you to do, it's an advisory role. Through this, this, this. The role that I'm going to propose to them when I meet with them tomorrow night is to help us vet project ideas. Rank them, rack them and stack them according to, you know, some kind of prioritization or, or scoring system that they'll develop. That I hope they'll, they'll be willing to develop, that takes into consideration different kinds of safety. That we could be pursuing through the equity and quality of life projects. And then, you know, how, how, how do we decide which neighborhoods they go in and, and which areas are, are the ones, you know? Maybe we give more points for something that's, you know, that leads to a school or, or something like that. But that's, that's not them tasking our staff, that's them helping our staff to sort through a process. And then we will, you know, we'll collectively decide which projects to pursue. And then we will, will, you know, design those and build those according to our normal process. I think they would like to be directing our staff to a greater extent than is, than is actually appropriate for their role.
Go ahead, Jay. And Charisse? Clarification, there are other commissions that have devoted staff time allocated, yes, no?
Yes, but not, but, but it's still advisory, it's, the, the role of the commission is still advisory. They have staff, they have a staff person. Her name is Shannon.
Yeah, I think, I think again, that just that I'm not talking about during meetings, but what I've been told, and correct me if I'm wrong. This is where I'm wanting clarification, is that there are other commissions that have staff time that is allocated outside of meetings. To keep moving the work of the commission for it, is that not accurate?
Well, it depends on the commission, for example, the civilian police review board has an, you know, has to follow the city ordinance. Human relations commission, if they've got cases before the commission, then yeah, there's work outside the commission. So it depends on the individual board or commission, yeah.
I just, I'm hearing a lot of saying, let's have B-PAC do this, this, and I'm just thinking, again, these are volunteers that we're asking to spend this time. So I'm trying to get clarification on what, what does that look like? And then kind of related to that, we keep hearing about public works being understaffed. Are we addressing that with this budget? I think I'm still not clear on, on what, are we going to get, get past this?
I, I think what, what maybe would be useful for me to, to, to describe is. The reason that we're understaffed, at least on the, not on the operations side, that's some of that is just finding time to do the, the recruitments for the positions that are vacant. But on the engineering side, it is identifying talent. And we have had, I don't know how long we've had open recruitments, it took us a couple of years. To, to find someone who was a, a, more than suitable, I don't want to, I don't want to undersell Tim Cowan. But, um, you know, a, a suitable public works director, finding a city engineer has been extremely challenging. There, the, the talent pool is very shallow and it's because people aren't going into this type of engineering anymore. So, and, and then, and then when you get to assistant city engineer and, and so on. So that's the challenge, we are, we are actively attempting to address that. It's, it's not, it's not for lack of effort that, that we are understaffed in public works.
But I'm happy to report, we actually have interviews scheduled for the end of the month for city engineer. So keep your fingers crossed. But it's been a very long process to get to that point. And then, and then because we are in a labor market that competes with every other city in the region. It's, it's a challenge to compete sometimes, so. But we will try. But, but we have interviews scheduled and it's a top priority.
I, I have a comment, well, a question too. So like right now, we're understaffed in the city clerk's office. So what are we going to do about filling those positions? I know Darcy is there, but I don't know, is she temporary and is anybody going to pick up Kay's job? Or how, how, how are we going to work that?
We have, yeah, go ahead, Karen.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll answer, I'll answer part of it, which is we have taken over some of the responsibilities of, that the clerk's office was filling. And so the, in this budget, I believe Elizabeth, that you transferred the case position out of the clerk's office into exec, I think, right?
We will do that in the budget ordinance.
In the budget ordinance, okay. So that's how we're handling that, and then Phyllis can speak to Darcy and her position.
Well, well, how come we're, we're not going to put, because someone in Kay's position?
We are, but it won't be in the clerk's office, it will be an exec. The work, the work has been taken out of the clerk's office into exec.
And it's, okay, I'm just trying to understand why it's going in exec as what, though?
As an admin position.
Oh, okay.
We, we, we will take, we, we are taking on the totality of FOIA. Other than, other than receiving someone's paper FOIA, the clerk has had a role, the clerk's office has had a role. In distributing and logging and so forth, and that has all been taken over.
And it makes more sense to have it in exec, which is where the paralegal is, who handle, who is the FOIA officer. So actually, the whole process has become much more streamlined and organized. And I have to say, Darcy in the, well, Phyllis can speak to Darcy, but from our perspective, Darcy is doing a tremendous job in the clerk's office. And she's a dynamo, so we're lucky to have her. But go ahead, Phyllis, you can fill in.
Yeah, Darcy is a dynamo, she is come in, she's taking the responsibility, she's a very quick learner, she's doing very well. However, the position that they took out of the clerk's office was just the FOIA, everything else is still there. Which means that these meetings that we have that go until 11 o'clock, Darcy has to get comp time for that. There's a limit to how much comp time can be issued to a, an employee. And we're going to have to discuss whether or not we're going to put a cap on that for her, since it's only she and I. I don't get comp time or anything like that, but Darcy will be racking it up with these kinds of meetings. And, you know, that's not going to be such a good thing for the city, you're going to have to pay or either give her time off. So we have to deal with that, that's something we need to talk about possibly in another few days. But it's my intent whatsoever is to talk about bringing Darcy on permanently because she is just that good. And I'm very pleased to have her with me in this office.
Oh, wonderful, okay.
You're down to your last two minutes, mayor.
Got time for one quick question. I think everyone's eyes are glazed over, so.
Say goodnight, mayor.
Say goodnight, mayor, okay. I think we're ready to call this a night. And again, if you have any questions you want to have addressed specifically at committee of the whole next week. Shoot us an email and we'll get, get stuff ready for next week and then I'll take notes on all your comments tonight. So we'll take those into account as well. Thank you for your very careful examination of the budget in consideration. And again, it's difficult, it's difficult coming in at this point in the fiscal year. So I, I appreciate all your, all your work on this. So with that, I think this meeting, in fact, I know this meeting is a.